Of the May 6th meeting agenda. Staff, any comments or adjustments?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'd just like to make one little addition to this agenda. It'll be for other business item 11A, the voucher disbursement report. This was emailed to council earlier and is also in a printed version tonight, but it's the actual report that goes along with that memo. So that would be the one addition for tonight.
Thank you. All right, council, anything to add?
Hearing none, I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
Second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say no or nay. That carries. Okay, next is the consent agenda pursuant to council rules. One motion, non-debatable. We'll approve the recommendation noted. Any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion and separate action. Such items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered immediately following approval of the balance of the consent agenda. Any changes, comments from staff? No? Council?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no or nay. That carries. So what did we approve? We approved the city council minutes from the April 15th, 2025 meeting. We approved receiving the sustainability committee meeting minutes from February 19th, 2025. We approved a resolution supporting the city of Robinsdale to host Minnesota Green Corps member during the 2025 through 2026 program year. We approved licenses. We approved the second reading of the ordinance adopting update to appendix B fee schedule. We received Robinsdale EDA meeting minutes from March 11th, 2025. We received planning commission meeting minutes from February 20th, 2025. Approval of fiber route project for 2025. We accepted funding from Conservation Partners Legacy Grant Program, ECP, round four. We authorized staff to accept grant funds from AKAC reunite program. And we approved Miller concessions permit to vend food at Hy-Vee. So, on to presentations. First up is the annual presentation from Hennepin County Commissioner Lundey.
I don't know if you can see it.
We can.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members for the opportunity. I'll try to be brief, and I promised him I'd do my best to be entertaining, but no promises on that. But I can maybe get the brief part down. So just, while we try to get out and give updates, I've got some notes. One thing I would, before I forget, is suggest to city manager when you do have that discussion about homelessness, there is the Streets to Housing Homeless Team for Hennepin County that does outreach every day. I've gone out with them. I would suggest if anybody's really interested going out and just seeing what they do, but they do that engagement. And if they hear about pockets where people have started to encamp, that they would be a great team to connect. I'm pretty sure embedded social worker knows it, but doesn't hurt to have them at the discussion because they can probably talk about what they've been doing elsewhere, other cities. They're up active in Brooklyn Center, around the transit center, they're in Minneapolis. Everything is different, but yet common, oftentimes homeless people suffer from needs. And so staff will tell you, it might take 10 attempts to get somebody to take an appointment. And so it might be worthwhile to have them take part in the discussion or not. It's up to you guys at your meeting, but I know that they might add some information, be able to provide answers to questions.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Streets to?
Streets to housing.
Streets to housing, thank you.
So, and they do, they're active. They, sometimes as encampment, sometimes they ride the train, sometimes they're riding buses, it depends area. They try to connect with people where homelessness people are. My son and I did the homeless count in February where it went out 11:00 PM for a couple hours to look for a count. So it is, again, up to you, but it might be worth your time to have that discussion because they might have some ideas, or they may not know about people coming up here too in camp. And that's an opportunity for them to engage. So. First, just want to say, as always, I like to highlight office. So Rich Neta, the first one is on maternity leave, so she'll be doing more important things up until the end of the summer. Ingrid is back from family leave, so I've kind of got a half-staff. They kind of decided to give me a week overlap. I appreciate that. Emma is the summer, she's going to be with me through the end of summer. Part-time now, she's a UVM student, and full-time. So I always like you to have these contacts because in my office, if you need anything, you can contact me, you can contact them. We don't have some hierarchy. We do a team approach. We are always connecting, so feel like if you need something, everybody in my office has good expertise and they can help concentrate on that. On the right side is just leadership. I always highlight those, you know what my specialties are, pretty much on public safety in the county. I, right now, I'm chairing all the committees. I concentrate, specialize in safety issues. We're entering the summer season, things tend to pick up. And so this is the time, you should know that you can always call or text me, even if you want to hear something or you want to know about something. I'll do my best to find information. Councilmember Black Legend, Mayor Sutton, we, you haven't given me your cellphones, just be warned by your fellow councilmembers. I do use them, and I will text you 7 by 24. But feel free, if you hear something or you need something, that things can happen in the city. Things can go wrong, things can go right, but just know that you're not alone and that you should know that there are people who can help you, even if it's just to provide information and things like that. Right now, a lot of my time is being spent on IGR, so I co-chair intergovernmental relations for the county. So myself and Commissioner Conley, we look after the platform. So there's two of us by rule. We can't have more than two because it becomes a public meeting. And so we are constantly watching what's happened at the legislature and trying to make sure that we're fast, whether it's here in the state or at the federal level. Just briefly, we continue to move on safe communities. The discussion here, since I've been on the board, we've really started to put more money into the community and trying to do our support so that you, as a city, can decide what your city philosophy and strategy will be, and the county will do its best to support you. So we're not going to tell you what you should do. We're just going to see what, can we help? And if there are grants or money, sometimes that can help make the difference between a nonprofit or church who might have activities. We do have that money comes up, RFP usually every year of the year. And so this year, last year, we had the Safe Community Summit, which was an idea to bring people together. This year, we're going to revamp it a little bit, and we're going to ask cities who are interested, and then we're going to actually pay for a technical consultant who's from a group called Cities United that will come out and work with your city. And work with the city means work with what you want to do. There is no magic answer what a city should do. It's really what's your focus, what kind of strengths and weaknesses you have, and what are the gaps? And so we know that, you know, youth in the summer, making sure they have things to do. I'm not sure about your youth, mine was spent between doing stuff and boredom. Usually it was boredom is when I was getting in trouble. It was never when I was doing something productive. So here, I'll just list the Cities United. If you're interested, check out the website. I've been a member as a mayor since 2010 and still know that you can go there, find resources. There's a national convening in late October where people can go and you'll be able to connect with people from around the country. And I like to use the city of Buffalo. They will tell you they've tried and failed at everything. And they will tell you exactly what they've tried and failed, because in failing, you find out what works. And so you can get those experiences in the cities, can be from 500 people, can be 5 million people. There isn't like, oh, this is for Robinsdale. There are all sizes, and everybody has different needs. And what you'll find is, it's not about the money, it's about the community. And when you have community, everything else flows. So I would suggest checking it out if you're interested. They're good, good people. And if you're able to go to the convening, you'll come away with, I think, empowered. And if you do, Hennepin County is going to co-host kind of a, some breakout sessions just for Hennepin County cities. And so I can provide more information later, but I know it's going to fill up fast. Three things, just kind of in youth interventions. I think, you know, as summer hits, kids are out. As I like to remind people, 99.9% of the kids in Hennepin County are going to have a good summer. It's the point one. But if you look at the news, you'd think it's every kid is causing every problem everywhere, and that's it. But it is 99.9% of kids will never connect with anything that would need to involve the justice system. So I like to remind people that because it is a good thing to remember, we concentrate on the kids that lack that. So our three things have really been about working group for youth interventions, which was a statewide task force I co-chaired last year to try to talk about state changes. And the upper right, regional framework, I'll talk a little bit more about that, is the idea that the metro counties are banding together, try to find resources. And the bottom thing is really a crisis stabilization center that will be opening up later this summer. Now, the first one, this is kind of a repeat from last year, but this is really telling the state that there's a bunch of stuff that they do that we need to be changing. Things about licensing, things that you can have a kid who's having behavioral issues to them in the Department of Human Services. And if they take a swing, then they hit Councilmember Greenberg, and he presses charges, that kid then moves to the corrections. It's a different system. They are not at all the same. They deliver different types of services. So the kid has a problem, but yet we bounce them. And then if they're in the corrections side and they're declared incompetent, they move out of the corrections, they move back to DHS. They get treatment, they take a swing, they hit Mayor Sutton. Mayor Sutton presses charges, we move them back. And that's how the system is set up in Minnesota, where kids who, really, their untreated issues that they're having manifest it in behavior, and that behavior ends up with them getting labels. When they get labels and you get enough of them, people don't want to help you. And so you bounce around. A lot of states have gone to a, youth are treated the same, no matter where you are. So we've got some ideas for the state. If I may be depressing on a Tuesday, we found a report from 1997 by a group that looked a lot like our group, and it said a lot of the same things, and the legislature hadn't acted upon those. So we're working hard, all the counties are, to try to get these changes done. On the regional side, these are the counties we've kind of banded together to say, you know, I always think of, I'm a simple person. You think about a summer barbecue, and you're bringing some people, everybody says what they're going to bring, I'll bring this, I'll bring that. This is what the counties are doing. We're all have pieces of the puzzle, and we're going to put them all together so that we can't all afford to do it ourselves. So by putting, Dakota might have this, Anoka might have that, Hennepin might have something. We're actually going to coordinate our systems together so that it is multi-county. So no longer are we going to say, well, that's Ramsey's thing. That's Hennepin's thing. So we're trying to put it all together. They are working on that right now. We've got working groups, including people with lived experience and family members, to try to say, how can we put these pieces together? And so the counties, whether the legislature supports it or not, we are moving forward because frankly, we can't wait for the legislature. Remember I mentioned 1997? It's down. 2025, and we're still waiting for those changes. So the counties are going to move ahead. You'll notice some of those counties are out of state, St. Louis County, Clay, which is not listed, Stearns, Olmsted. They are looking at what the, this group does to try to replicate that. Because make no doubt about it, if one county's having a problem, every county's having a problem. So we think that that's going to help us try to drive some change. That's probably like, if you think about it, 12 to 18 months out. This is more immediate. This is end of summer. So Hennepin County has funded, we allocated $15 million to build a crisis center. It'll be at 1800 Chicago, which your police department's aware of when people who have addiction or they're, maybe it's alcohol, they can be taken to that place. Sometimes it's called a place to dry out, sometimes. But we're going to have a crisis center there that will be for kids that are having, whether they are having episodes that are not crime connected, or they're in the crimes justice system. We won't care. So we got a waiver from the state, so we actually, remember I talked about those two things? We actually got a waiver from the state to test out what it would be like if we had them together. So we won't care if a kid connects with the Robinsdale Police Department or the Robinsdale School District. It will not matter to us. It'll be for kids in very deep mental health needs. It's meant to be like a bucket for 30 to 45 days. Bring kids in, get them stabilized, come up with a plan of action, and then they move on. It's not meant to be a place that they stay. It's meant to just, where can we stabilize them? A lot of that spree stuff you see, where you see a kid over four days racks up 20 things, rips off some cars, assaults some people, and it's like the spree. Those are the kind of instances where we are hoping to kind of get intervene in, kind of get in the middle. So when that center is open, you will be receiving an invite. Robinsdale staff and council, elected officials, to go out and tour it. So you can actually see what a crisis center looks like, if you're interested. Sometimes people say they want to find a place for these kids, but it has to have barbed wire, big towers, lots of security. That doesn't sound like a place to take kids for, that sounds like a jail. And so what we're going to show to people is, here's an example of what could be done with those kids. I don't think you guys have any interest in any of the information on this one. No, I'll just say that right now, we're in kind of that, we're in pure engineering mode. We're in, we're in station design, I think, and I don't know, I want to make sure. Hopefully, Robinsdale has received some support from that council for staffing. I'm looking over at Tim. Okay. Just want to make sure, if I say that it's coming, that it's arrived. So we're going to continue to really focus on the, I would say, the nuts and bolts, the blue line right now. It's going to be, where are things going to be, where are they going to be laid out? How, what does that feedback look like? Where are those things, I would say, with Claudia and the, kind of the challenges of some of the accessibility? Those are things that I think Robinsdale can, maybe it won't be part of the project, but you, there are federal grants, at least there still are, I believe, that will help with some of that. So as you get farther away from the transit zone, there are things you can help to tackle sidewalks, curbs, things that might be accessible, but if you put a little ice on it, a little wetness, it ceases to be accessible. So there's, I think, lots of opportunities. I'll put it that way, and I'd be happy to see what I can find out, because I know money does matter when it comes down to putting new sidewalks in. At the federal level, we processes just continue onward. And by that, I mean, there's been no changes with the change of leadership in the White House. Right now, Salt Lake City has a light rail project ahead of us. We're watching that. There's a couple other places, so we're going to give a good example of what's going to happen. We're still on target to ask for full funding grant agreement next year. We still expect to have the environmental. I think it will go out to the public the end of summer. I might be wrong in that, but I know it's end of summer, early fall, but that'll be the public's turn to talk about the environmentals. Once that's approved, which I think will be the beginning of next year, that really gets to the full funding grant agreement. So from county perspective, who's put, I don't want to say all, but 95-plus percent of the money for the bonds for the project from our side, that money is still there. And the county board remains committed to provide the funding for that as the project moves forward.
Mayor, Commissioner, can I ask a question? Thank you for that. Do you get reports or updates from county staff when they visit City Hall here and join us on like work sessions and whatnot?
Oh, I'm sorry, broke up.
Do you, do you get like reports back? I guess one thing that came up in the last time that we were, that county staff and project staff were here, I was just curious if you got a report back, but maybe I'll just say what I was going to say. The one, couple things we touched on were lighting and light pollution. That was kind of the topic. So I don't know if you have any information, updates on that? And then also the substation for the Metro Transit PD, if you have any additional details that have maybe come to light since staff updated us a few weeks ago. Thank you.
Yep. I don't have updates, but if it's okay, I will take that back and get some information. I think the lighting thing will be a pure engineering, but I think that'll be an opportunity for community feedback on where those lights show up. Because I know with the different elevations, people, if their houses are lower elevation, you want the lights to be aimed correctly so that you're not lighting up one half of the road. But if it's okay, I will owe you an answer, the whole council, I'll put it that way. But I'll get information for that.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
If we have additional questions?
Yep.
Do you have a section at the back of this for questions?
I do at the end, but, I do at the end, but it doesn't matter. You can hit away.
Okay. You'd said that you are requesting grant funding next year. When, when is that? And forgive me for not knowing, but a lot to catch up on.
So FFGA, Full Funding Grant Authority Amendment, is basically, it's the, the federal government saying, okay, you've got 51%, because they'll never pay more than half. We will provide 49, or it might be 47. So that's, that price tag gets fixed. We go to them, certify that amount. Let's say it's $3 billion, because I like the round numbers. So we would be in for 1.6, they might be in for 1.4. So that's kind of that moment of truth, are they going to be in? And so it might be 1.2. We don't know until that gets there, but there has to be environmental, it has to be done. All these things have a very sequential step, but except right now, we've not, and we check, often we have a lobbyist whose whole job is in DC to track this. Nothing has changed as far as the process, nothing's changed according to funding. And so we're watching what other ones ahead of us, if they get told something that we're like, okay, now we need to think about that. So I would point out, as much of the challenges on Southwest, of which I had to vote, spend money on, Trump administration, the first term, they required them to have a much higher reserve, which I will only say thank God, because we used it. So the old requirements were lower, and now that is the new number, to have those more reserves. So we will learn these things as we watch people ahead of us. It's kind of like a, a train, sorry for the bad pun. But basically, you're, someone's ahead of us, they're farther in the process, they're going to get, we're going to see what they get, what questions they ask, and then we move up. And so everybody has done kind of squinchlings. Some people drop out because they either pull out of the project, I'm thinking of California, the train to nowhere. Eventually theirs will probably fall off. So I don't know if that answers.
Yeah, I know, that was, that was helpful. And then, you know, and I'm sorry to pick at this, but, so Southwest, obviously, there's budget overruns, right?
Yep.
And as a taxpayer, and as somebody who represents taxpayers, like, how, how do, what is, and forgive again my ignorance, but what's being put in place to ensure that the budget's the budget, right?
Yep.
And it doesn't go to 6 million or 5 million?
I, I think one thing, we changed the governance structure on it so that in Southwest, the county, I call it, I'll say the money, the county, although the Met Council did put money in at the end, that took negotiating, but most of the money was county money locally. We were after the fact. It's like, I'm not sure about your kids, but when my son orders Chipotle using the Chipotle app, I get a notification that says he just ordered dinner, and that's when I found out I spent the money. And so this new governance structure puts us at the front end. So to use that analogy, I'm there with my son before he orders and deciding, helping with that. Now, it doesn't change the fact that we still need to do something, but it allows us to be earlier and start to have a little more, we're kind of early in the process. Second thing I think that is, we moved it off the rail, which I know was contentious here in Robinsdale, lots of people have questions. But by moving in the middle of 81, it removes about $110 million off that bill. If you figure $10 million a mile, that's for the wall. That suddenly doesn't, that's a cost we don't have to deal with. And, you know, it becomes county roads, it becomes easier because it's a county negotiating with the county on some of that. Obviously impacts locally, but when you're talking about the cost factor, it's, it's all about us. We're looking heavily at the bridge that the county spent money to redo. So, and I think the other thing is just, we're not putting any dang tunnels near any condos or any lakes. One thing Southwest didn't do is they went to the federal government early. The federal government, once they give you your money, that's your money. Then they made changes afterwards. And those changes afterward is what drove up the cost. And so that is a county, Met Council, I'm not going to point fingers, we'll just say we, okay? So we're not going to go to that full funding grant agreement request until we have the full budget locked in. So when we go there, it's going to count for everything. There's not going to be suddenly a need to put a tunnel in, which wasn't in there. So that is one things we're going to do, is make sure that when we go to the feds, because when the feds say they'll give you 1.4, that's it. They're, they're not in for any more. So I think that's what we've approached it as.
Last question.
Yep.
And I promise, given the environment, and I know we're watching Salt Lake City, if the funding doesn't show up, what happens?
That'll be a great day for the county board to have a discussion. So right now, the, the bonds that pay for the local share, not all of it, but the local share, is funded by sales tax, which is transit tax in Hennepin County. Those use to fund the bonds. If we were to get 40%, and we had to pay 60, so I'm not getting 49, I'm getting 40, we would have to take a look at adjusting that. Do we still do that? So we, we do all scenarios. So if you're asking me if we got nothing, and the county said we wanted to still go forward, we've run those scenarios. Is it something we want to do? No. I don't want to go to the feds, because I would also say this, if I, we send a lot of money to the federal government. I want it back. And so we, that money, if it doesn't go to us, it's going to go to the next one behind us. And it might end up in Charlotte, Denver, wherever else. So I look at that money as Minnesota's a net contributor when it comes to taxes, and asking for our, I wouldn't even say fair, I'd take just a little bit more. So we'll, we'll approach that as we go, but it's a, it's a fair question. We just don't know. But I always look at it, this is Northwest, our area, my district, right? We are transit poor. We don't have a lot of East West, good luck. You have some stuff. You have municipalities Plymouth and Maple Grove that are disconnected from the system. They don't go, Maple Grove does not serve us Brooklyn Park, even though they're right next door. So we've had a lot of people that can't even get East and West, or you have to go downtown to get back out somewhere. And so my, one of my philosophies is if we get two pieces of the metal on the ground for 11 miles, they can't take that from us. And I mean that, because when I first got elected to council many, many years ago, I had a couple, Latino couple that had a half-hour ride to their work. They moved the bus, became a 90-minute each-way ride. And you know what their response was? They had to move. So that, for some people, transit dependency is a big issue, and the way I think we get messed with, with, they move a bus. Unless you're on the bus, you probably don't care, but somebody is. So. I don't know if there are more questions or?
Go ahead. Anybody else? Sorry, I don't mean to.
I know, I had questions not related to light rail, but I didn't know if you wanted other, to cover other stuff for finish.
I could do this part, and then I'll, I'll be, at least done with that, and you guys can be done with me or ask me more questions. I'm good either way. One thing I'd like to highlight is Commissioner Budget Amendments. It's kind of unique, being a former mayor, we never got the chance to say, here's something I want to try, right? It has to be in the budget. So Commissioner Budget Amendments are an opportunity for commissioners to bring stuff to try. I would say Commissioner Opat brought embedded social workers, right? Today, we just celebrated the anniversary of it. The first one was in Brooklyn Park. Now they're, almost every city in the county has it. And so those kind of try-it things become opportunities. So these are the ones that I brought forth last year. I'll just cover a couple of them. One of the challenges we have in Hennepin is African-American indigenous mothers suffer a much, much higher rate. It's not just a little, it is a much higher rate of the child passing away, the child having medical difficulties, or the mother having medical difficulties, or the mother passing away. And it's not close, it's not like a rounding, it is a serious number. And so we've set up the birth justice equity so that we can try to tackle those. Why are these happening? Just to specific groups. And one of the things I brought for, because I'm a fan of community involvement, is have a advisory board made up of moms, expecting moms, former moms, or family members to help advise that process, because I believe the best thing in government is when community is there, helping to provide input. Couple other ones I'll just mention, I think number two, which I would say would probably be one of your top ones, is what is the cost of law enforcement going to be in five and 10 years? We know the costs have gone up dramatically. It's been, because people leaving the professor, people retiring, we don't have enough people coming in. Is, so this is going to be a macro study, look at Hennepin, all agencies, not just the Is, so this is gonna be a macro study, look at Hennepin, all agencies, not just the sheriffs, but every agency, to say what is the cost of law enforcement gonna be in five and ten years? So that we actually have an idea, you, every jurisdiction, what are we looking at? Where do we need to be? What strategies could we do now to start to tackle some of that? And so that'll be like a macro study, it'll be public, I would expect it to be done by the end of probably this fall. But it's really to look out five and ten years to give, I think, all of us an idea of where we're looking at. And I think the last one I'll just mention quickly is, actually I'll mention too, the number seven, cultural corridors. You know, I think, you know, people think about culture and community, I think Robinsdale Birdtown, that's, right? And so how can you guys celebrate that as part of the light rail being through that corridor? Where can you be so when somebody's on the rail, they may know they're in Robinsdale simply because you've created this visual and this kind of welcome environment where they know where they are? And Crystal will be different, Broken Park will be different, different stops, the college might be different. And so we're gonna have those grants will be coming out the end of the year. What the county will do is provide technical assistance so that you can decide what you want. But we'll help you with people power and consultants if you so choose to need it, so that you get what you want, whether it's public art. What is it that you want people to see when they get off the station at Robinsdale? And last one I'll just mention for youth is, I'm a big believer in getting youth involved. And so we're gonna do an anime pilot, if anybody has kids, you know, mine, it's, that's the way they want to look at things. So we're gonna see about using anime as a different way to communicate with youth from the county to share services, using that as a medium to do outreach and we'll see, it's a pilot. Last thing mentioned is all of my budget amendments were net neutral, so I didn't have to use any reserves. All the budgets were actually used within existing budgets, so sometimes that's not the case, but for this last year, mine were smaller dollar and really about trying out some stuff, so. Before questions, I just wanted to mention a little bit of a preview. So Hennepin, as you know, if you're watching the state and the federal government, right now we are watching closely because there are, what costs get saved at state and federal level gets passed down. Right now, and I have to use the worst case because I'm not a best case planner when it comes to budgets, we're looking at about a five point three percent levy increase just for the state. And that's where the state is gonna take something called disability waivers and make the counties pay for it whilst mandating that we offer it. Those are entitlements and so what's important is, before we even get to July, if that number holds true, the tax levy for next year in Hennepin County will go up five point three percent. That does not include what the federal government will do to us when they remove funding for things and we have to cover. And that does not count for the fact that we have staff getting raises and stuff. So we are looking at probably the worst, I say worst because increase in the history of Hennepin County, where we know one part is state, another is fed, and then there's just our own stuff for tax levy increases. So those are the bad news I always deliver, but it's, we're watching it closely, we're lobbying, we're trying to work with legislators to say, if you've got budget problems, pass on it to us, we only have property taxes. We're not, we don't have all kinds of funding mechanisms and so you know what property tax does to people and how it can impact people differently. So with that, I'll stop, if there's any questions.
Any questions?
Sure, I guess. Thanks, um, thank you Commissioner for being here. The, I know that's like a joint county Met Council thing, but in the past, you were on the Public Safety Commission of the County, whatever it's called. And I think one of the things you guys were involved in was hiring the Metro Transit Police Chief. Do you have any updates on, on, on that? I, I don't know, I know the previous one had moved on to something else and I don't know what has happened since.
I think we are part of the, not part of the group that picks it, but we're part of like an advisor, kind of when they brought some candidates and do that. So I think we're hopeful, I think Metro Transit Police is in a different world than it was four years ago. When I first got elected, we're all like, what's going on, they're didn't own officers. So it's up there, we're working closely, I think they've been able to staff up, they've been hired people, some, I call it, community service officers to work on some of those routes and so I think, you know, I was very harsh on them, I think they are doing a much better job, but no insight on when that new chief will be hired.
All right, great, and then I guess just a tail off of law enforcement. So immigration, there's been a lot of, I guess, high profile news items about immigration, the Federal Immigration Enforcement Service, you know, coming and, and grab, and, you know, detaining people. Our, one of our police captains wrote an op-ed in the Sun Post a month ago or so, talking about the relationship with Robinsdale Law Enforcement and Immigration, the Federal Immigration Enforcement Service, kind of saying that that's outside of their purview, we want community members to want to come to us, whether or not they're independent of their documentation status, right? We want people to feel like they can come to their local city or their local police department. So I was wondering if you could just speak on the sheriff's, Hennepin County sheriff's role with that too?
Yeah, it, I'll do the best I can and I don't want to speak for the sheriff because it's her policy. We, the little wrinkle is, as being elected, she gets to set her own policies, we fund them. But she can determine how does she do things and so I'll, I would say, I saw the letter, I would say that's very consistent with the sheriff's position, which is that it is not our job to do immigration enforcement. It's not my job to decide, you know, how we patrol the, the, between Taiwan and China, right? There are certain things that the federal job, state job, county, local, and it's my belief, it's always been my belief, when I was mayor and as commissioner, that we stick with our lanes and that they can, they want to enforce it, they can. I know that I, I want to, I better not guess what I think, I, I'm pretty sure the policy on the jail is exactly that, but I don't want to speak too far because that would be disrespectful to sheriff, especially if I misspeak. But I saw the letter and I, that's consistent with well, who we approach things. It's, it's not our responsibility, there's a lot of things that the federal government is responsible for. Immigration enforcement is not ours, so.
Great.
I have enough challenge spending money on the things that we do have to do, adding other people's stuff is not gonna help.
Well, thank you for, for speaking to, at the level that you could. I also had a question about the HERC closure timeline and just, you kind of spoke about some legislative priorities of the county. Is the HERC wrapped in some of those priorities as well? I don't know what the, the money, if it would be to keep it open longer or would it to help the closure or kind of where things are at? Just from, yeah, county HERC and then maybe the legislative asks of the kind of whole system.
Yep.
Thanks.
So we, we have received a bonding appropriation to convert, to add a anaerobic digester for organics to the Broken Park Transfer Station, based off what we now know, the A, it was gonna cost three times as what we anticipated. And two, if, I don't know if anybody's been to an organic digester, trying to think of a good way to say it, Thanksgiving dinner. People eat too much, you can figure out everything else after that. So the mix, organics matters on what, how the composting works and how much gas is created that you can use for energy. And so there's some differentials, given our county's so big, that we couldn't guarantee a mix that would be, you know, I'm not the best person, I've seen one in California. But, so what we decided to do is ask the legislature, could we repurpose the bonding money for the adjacent site to the transfer station to make a sorter? And that would sort out organics potentially, like using like, let's say, orange bags or whatever, where we actually grabbed them out of a can versus now where we have to do it, where we might grab recycling. So it's basically like conveyor system that you use computer systems to grab certain types of trash and you sort it out and then you send it to different places. So it's part of our goal is to, if we could capture, I think thirty percent of our waste is organics. We're not getting thirty percent organics. So if we can start to capture those waste streams, I, I, it's my goal that we don't need the HERC. And so it's gonna take some work, I wish I could say, you know, we're gonna, next year. But if we can get the sorter, that'll allow us to get one step closer and that's about thirty to forty percent of the waste. So there is a plan, if you're really interested, if you haven't seen it, it's long. I wouldn't say it's exciting, but it is detailed into what our plans are and what steps. But we are actively looking to get that sorter, at least some initial funding. We have allocated five million dollars to do the initial work for designing, which usually means we're, we're gonna get it done. It's just how much money of our money do we have to use?
Thank you, and then just a follow-up, so you said you are repurposing, or you asked to repurpose, what is it repurposing from?
Yep, so it, I think it was two years ago, we received bonding money for specifically an anaerobic digester. And so what we're saying, don't give us new money, allow us to take that money you already gave to us and use it for a different use. So that way we're not saying you gotta give us additional money, we're just saying can we use it in a different way? It's not a digester, it's a sorter, it's still gonna be trash, so that is one of our.
I see, got you.
Yeah, we're just hoping to get permission to use the money they gave to us in a different way.
Great, okay, thank you, thank you for letting me grill you, that was all my questions, thank you Mayor, thank you Council. Thanks for being here Commissioner.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you Commissioner, it's always a pleasure to hear from you and what your team has been up to, thank you for the presentation. Question on the Cities United partnership and the twenty twenty-five convening. I see that it's the twelfth annual, is this the first time that Hennepin County has been a part of this gathering?
I think we've attended in the past, but this is like our first official, we're partnered with them, we're going to the convening, we're gonna have a breakout session for, so I think it's just a deeper partnership.
That's great.
Yeah, last year was the first official activity.
Okay, I would, I would be very interested in hearing what the breakout topics are or if you have an agenda. It looks like a great gathering, so I would love to hear more as you are able to share. Another, just a comment on the Behavioral Health Center opening, definitely do include us in an invite, I'd be very interested to see that space. And then one final question on the Birth Justice Community Advisory Board. Is there, is there any room for or opportunities for public involvement with that advisory committee? And the reason why I ask, in another chapter of my life, I was working in the maternal health world and would love to share any opportunities with my network if, if there are some for community involvement.
Yep, so a great thing about the county is it's really big and can do big things. Bad thing about the county is it can take a few months to get it. So I will take your request, I know that the Community Advisory Board is gonna be kind of percolated. I would expect it to start to get public this summer as far as open membership.
Okay.
So it's not like, I don't have like ten people, I basically said, we need to have community have their own voice, not county staff speaking for them. And so it is basically, they might come back with maybe certain groups or certain pockets, but usually there's a geographic and then there's a special interest mix, so that there are people that represent all parts of the county and then there's people that represent specific, you know, doulas, certain people that have specific experience that'd be really helpful. And then maybe, you know, people representing maybe a former teen mom who might bring the perspective of having kids, maybe what she might describe as a little early, and yet they have a perspective that would be impactful, our, why our healthcare system's not serving them. So I owe you an answer, I know we are just starting to figure out that board, but it's absolutely my intent, it was written to say, community membership, not staff membership.
Okay, thank you so much, I'll keep an eye out for, for more on that. Those are all my questions, thank you so much.
Thank you. One thing I want to say, I'll get the presentation sent to you, but there's a direct link to the convening and then obviously Cities United where you can find some good information. And it costs nothing for Robinsdale to join, listen, take part in stuff, there is no entry cost.
Okay, thank you.
If I can deliver some good financial news today.
I have a question, if I may, okay. So if I can turn the channel back to organics and forgive me if this is not in your run, and we can certainly take it another time if it's not, but one thing that caught my eye actually in one of the other materials that was in our packet today and as we were talking about organics recycling, I recall seeing that, I mean, we're, we're charged on organics fee in our utility bill, regardless if we participate or not. And, you know, for those of us that compost or dispose of organics another way, yep, I understand, I think it's a good idea. What I'm confused by, and if you could shed any light on this for anybody who's listening or people in the room and especially myself, why is it that when more people participate in the recycling, organics recycling program, the costs go up? It seems counterintuitive, you would want the costs to go down because you've got scale and so that's one of the things I just don't understand and I don't think that's a city or Robinsdale thing, I think that's a Hennepin County thing, is it not?
So the, the fact that you have to charge a fee for organics, use it or not, you gotta pay. That was decided by the state MPCA saying it's recycling and like recycling, everybody pays whether they do it or not. How that service gets offered to residents is a city license? Please, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, so some cities, some cities do things differently and I'm not saying the cost is you, but some cities, smaller cans, lower costs, other cities have different things. Broken Park has a consortium that they do, so different, the pricing can be different. It also can be different if you have an open market. And I've been telling people shop around because you'll find that some places charge twice to three times as much for a can that other people do. So I'm not gonna give any names out, but there is a difference in pricing. And so it depends on your city, some cities do uniform collection, I'm not sure, I believe Robinsdale, I think Tim would know better than I would.
Hot potato.
Mr. Mayor, also, so as the Commissioner noted, the interpretation at the statutory level, there's long band language that says, if you, for example, offer curbside recycling collection, you cannot charge more to person A than person B, that the charge needs to be the same, whether they participate or not. The most recent interpretation where this change effectively included organics, organics was interpreted to be a part of recycling, so is that one forward? Now, specific to your question, with organized collection in Robinsdale that we participate in, the additional charge of processing and carrying out comes with an additional fee. So where we started at, the fee that you're charged this year, there are no changes, no changes will be made to that as part of your utility agreement. But I think what you're referring to is there's a chart in the, in the actual contract with the hauler, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, and I saw something in, in the agenda packet, forgive me, I'm not recalling the exact item, but it's coming up.
Yeah, so the, the intention with that is that if those do go up and there are additional hauling costs and additional truck costs, then there are additional costs to process that, if that makes sense.
Bluntly, no, but we can take it offline, I just, it's, sorry, I mean, we'll, we can discuss offline, I don't want to.
Sure.
Debate it here, but I'd like to wrap my head around that one, yeah.
I, I can, I'll get you, owe you some information. I would, I would say you are blessed to, to be here about a year and a half late before the fees started everyone. And then everybody discovered that organics recycling and regular recycling charges, whether you use it or not, so.
I doubt this is a great idea.
Yeah, so I, I will take that as an action item to at least pull some information on pricing. I know it can vary depending on the city and how implementation, some cities are organized, some are not and, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, um, thank you so much for being here. I asked a question around the Crisis Addiction Center and thinking about how we define youth for this R community and as people are thinking about the like, what is youth and as Hennepin County refers to young people?
Are you asking me for?
Yeah, this, this age, what age range would be?
So we have a couple weird things. Legally, it's very prescribed, right? When somebody's legal, a certain age, if they're under twelve, I think that's changing right now, they can't be part of the justice system if they do something wrong. If a kid is finishing their sentence, they can go up to twenty and be considered youth, depending on where they are in that system. Now, on the behavioral side, who, people would say, and I would defer to their knowledge, that, you know, brains aren't fully developed till twenty, twenty-five, somewhere in there. And so we define youth differently on the behavioral health side. So, and that's kind of that part about two different systems dealing with somebody. So I think we tend not to put limits on it, but if you're in the justice system, there's some pretty hard rules on what can and can't be. But I think for helping people on behavioral addiction, trauma, you know, most kids who have been, are facing trauma, it is a family thing. If they're facing addiction, you can always, mental health untreated, you can, if you get to the family and you start helping the family, you help the kid. And then typically if you have a family in need, they might have a couple of kids who are actually, you're helping more than just one kid. So that's been our approach, that's your embedded social worker, they are going deep on people, frequent callers, they try to find them services, so. How's that for dance of not answering any of your questions?
That is a great answer, not answer, so I'm gonna, I'll refer to say twelve to twenty-five potentially.
Yep.
Hi Commissioner Lundey, thanks for being here and I really appreciate the presentation. I guess the thing I'm thinking about is just at a federal level, there's so many changes happening right now and it feels like things are being taken away or changed. And the perspective in your presentation is really about like the opportunities that Hennepin County is looking towards and, and doing great work. I'm just wondering like from your perspective on like the challenges that you see with all the changes at the federal level. I know there's like, that's impacting state, which then impacts county, but I'm just wondering like from a concern standpoint of like, I mean, you expressed the, the, the fact that, you know, the levy might go up, that's a big concern, but are there others that maybe jump out?
Yeah, I think the difference right now between the state and the federal is the state by law has to balance their budget, which would be really nice if the feds had to do that, but, so we can see with certainty as they approach that balanced budget that they have to launch, we can start to see real numbers. And so that allows us some clarity, not everything is gonna hit this year, but at the county, we are always, we're off by half a year, so we've got to kind of start to plan out things. So state's a little more defined, like we can see that, I'll be going down there Thursday to try to talk about some of that stuff. The federal is, you know, you have the White House doing executive orders left and right. Do they sick, are they sued, I mean, we're all kind of watching that. Do they sick? Are they sued? I mean, we're all kind of watching that. So, what the county has taken, all of us, the board and the staff, is that we're not gonna change things until we hear that the federal government has changed something. But that means if they pass a law and it gets signed, it says this, okay. Now, does that mean we're going crazy with spending? No, we're in a hard labor freeze. If you wanna hire somebody in Hennepin County with ninety-six hundred employees, you have to go to the county administrator. So, we are being very conservative with numbers, but we're, we're being very like, okay, let's not overreact. The world won't end. If it does, then I'll have to pay my mortgage. But, so, that's been our approach, is just say, what is in front of us? Let's react to that, not some of the good political back and forth. So, that's been our approach and we're trying to stick with it.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, I just wanna say, as you see, I led with my staff. We've had some up and down. My staff is still with me. They're just, have more important things I do. Family and health is always more important than work. Usually by now, I would have bugged you guys to ask for some time to meet or just to hear what your priorities are so that I'm reflecting what you need and hearing about that stuff. And so, I would expect in the next couple of weeks, once session ends, you'll get that message from me and I, I do look for that. And of course, I'll make sure you guys get my cellphone for council member and mayor. It's the best way. If you need to reach me, text me seven by twenty-four because our purview being public safety, I tend to be online and open usually all the time. So, with that, I appreciate your time and your questions.
Mr. Lundey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Robbinsdale Communications Annual Presentation.
There we go. All right. There we go. Hi, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name's Rachel Lean. I'm the communications coordinator here at the city of Robbinsdale. And I've been here in my role for just over a year now. So, figured it was about time to provide you all with an update of what I've been up to this year, changes we've made in our communications, as well as just ongoing priorities that I've continued with as I've taken this role on. So, jumping into it, just wanted to provide you all with a overview of our current communications methods. I would say the main three are definitely our website, our newsletters and our social media. And I'll dive into each of those sections in a little bit more depth. But I just wanted to also highlight that we do still do some general print materials. I work with the rec department a lot to do some flyers with them that we put up in parks and around city hall and city buildings. We also do some direct mailings from time to time. That's usually when we have larger procedural changes. A great example of that is the recent trash waste hauler transition that we just did. Things like that, that require a big postcard that we wanna make sure every single resident is receiving in their mailbox. We also work with some really great media partners. I know you have all been involved with CCX Media and the great stories that they do for us here in Robbinsdale. And the Sun Post also is reporting a lot on Robbinsdale. So, they're great partners to always be working with. And then just other methods, a lot of in-person communication or just verbal communication that we're having with folks here who come into city hall or over the phone or just at various community events. So, communicating in many ways. So, first of all, diving into social media and starting off with Facebook. Facebook is definitely our most popular and consistently posted on social media account. And as you can see, we have quite a lot of, quite a large following on our Facebook and that following just continues to grow as we post consistently on it. And so, from January of twenty twenty-four, we've gained, as of now, this presentation was actually a few weeks, a few weeks old, the numbers from it, but now it's grown about a thousand followers from last January. And so, the purpose of our Facebook is really kind of a catch-all account. We post really frequently on it, general updates, a lot of information, resources from partner organizations like the county. Really just anything and everything that we feel is important for community members to know. And I included just some fun metrics on here that we are able to access via the backend of our Facebook posting software. And so, the metrics here are from January of twenty twenty-four to, to current. And the green little percentage signs there show comparison with September of twenty twenty-two to December of twenty twenty-three. And so, as you can see, the visits to our page and content interaction has gone up about a hundred fifty percent since that twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three time period, which is really exciting to see that people are not only visiting our pages or our Facebook page, but they're also engaging with our content too. And that content interaction means commenting, liking, sharing, just engaging with it in any way. I also wanted to highlight link clicks. At the end of pretty much all of our Facebook posts, we direct people to usually our website for more information or to other resources if it's from a partner organization. So, it's really great to see that people are clicking on those links and exploring more and looking into more information if they're interested. So, next, our Instagram is our next most frequently used account. And we have gained around a hundred and sixty followers since last January. And the purpose of our Instagram is a little bit different from Facebook. I would say it's more high-quality photo oriented. And lately, we've been using our Instagram to share a lot of staff highlights, which is great. So, just on our Instagram as well, a few interesting metrics here. The visits to our Instagram have also gone up about eighty-six percent from that twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three time period. So, it's kind of cool to see, even if people aren't liking our posts, which they are, we, we do get a good amount of likes, but they're still visiting our page and at least looking through our content. So, it's interesting to just kind of look at what content does well on our Facebook and Instagram. And of course, you may have already heard about this post, but I needed to just mention our car removal post on Crystal Lake this year that went viral by our standards for sure. It got over two thousand likes and like over four hundred comments. And it was really fun to see people engaging and interacting on that post. And the crazy thing, it wasn't even a one-off. I think a month prior to that, we posted about the car removal and that one got, you know, a thousand plus likes too. And I say this in the trend that people are really engaged with natural resource education and updates. Whenever I work with our water resources specialist or city forester on a social media post, pretty much without fail, it does really well. So, I think that's awesome to hear that our, our community members are really interested to see what we're doing with our natural resources. So, we'll continue with that theme this year too. Pretty much just any big changes that are happening in the city do really well. Timely information does really well on Facebook. So, recently, it's that waste hauler information that people are looking to Facebook to find information on. People also really like to hear about what city council is up to. If you're passing a proclamation, people really like to see that, I think, on Facebook and understand what their local city council is doing. And then generally on Facebook and Instagram, event photos do really well. I think people like to see the events, even if they can't make them. It's nice to just scroll through a recap of the event and get kind of a nice picture of what happened. And then also on Facebook and Instagram, just that staff recognition, recognition piece is something that we really tried, tried to highlight more this year. We have such amazing staff here at Robbinsdale and making sure we're sharing their stories and the work that they do and are being recognized is, was really important to us this year. And then our newest social media account is our LinkedIn account, which was started just about a year ago. And we have about a hundred sixty followers so far. So, this has been quite a slow start. I won't lie. It's been, it's difficult to build a new social media site. But we're excited to see some followers coming and some of our posts are getting engagement, interactions, which is fun to see. And again, the purpose of this platform is a little bit different than the others in that the main purpose is to share the current job openings that we have here at the city. And along with that, just any city accomplishments, city awards. And again, that staff recognition piece is what we wanna be putting out there on LinkedIn, on LinkedIn. So, that is going well and we're hoping to, I'll keep posting consistently on that and hoping to see that grow a little bit more here too in the next year. Getting into our next piece, we have three newsletters that go out frequently here in Robbinsdale. Our biggest newsletter is our biannual city newsletter. It's eight pages, hard copy, and that goes to almost seven thousand businesses and residential recipients. And that newsletter is really a team effort. There's a lot of collaboration between all of our city departments here to make sure that we're touching base on all the most important updates with all the departments and really making sure that the most crucial information is getting in that newsletter since every single resident does receive that in their mailbox. We also have our bi-monthly utility bill insert and that's also a hard copy newsletter, front and back. And that gets placed in with utility bills for those who get their utility bills as a hard copy. And we've heard really, that this utility billing news is referenced a lot. I think it's hard for people to miss that bill or to miss that news insert when they're opening their bill and it's right there next to it. So, we definitely have a lot of people referencing that utility news, utility billing news, which is great to hear. And then we also have our weekly Birdtown Brief and that is our digital newsletter that gets sent out every single Friday to those who subscribe to it. And there's right about twelve hundred digital recipients right now. And I would say that's treated kind of similarly to the Facebook where it's a little bit of a catch-all. We're constantly sharing just resources, information and just timely updates that we would like residents to know. And this is just my favorite segment from the Birdtown Brief and a good example of just sharing out the work of our individual employees here at the city. About once a month, we have an employee spotlight in the Birdtown Brief and this also gets posted onto our social media accounts as well. But I pretty much just sit down, have an interview with an employee here at the city and just go through what they do in their job, their duties, their favorite parts of their job and just get to know our city staff here a little bit more, which I think has been great for our staff and also great for residents to see too with the people working here behind the scenes. And so, then getting into kind of my biggest project of the year was my, was the website redesign. And so, here is a little bit of a timeline of the website redesign and I won't go into too much depth, but I show you this just to kind of exemplify that it was, it wasn't a short process. We signed the contract with Civic Plus, who is our new website host in May of twenty twenty-four. And the new website did not launch until January sixteenth of twenty twenty-five. And so, in between those times, it was a lot of design, a lot of content switch over and a lot of training to make sure that any staff who were touching the new website felt comfortable and knew what they were doing, including myself, and were ready to have that new site launch. And so, as a little refresher, here is the old website homepage. And it's, it's fine, but if you scroll, that, that you're not gonna find anything else. This was kind of the full homepage. So, I think a lot of content kind of got buried in those tabs up top. It was, you had to do a lot of navigation to get to more than just these main six buttons. So, looking at a snapshot of our new homepage, at first glance, it doesn't look too different. It's kind of the top navigation tab and some new buttons. But the main difference is now if you scroll on the live site, you're gonna run into a whole lot more on our new homepage. And so, if you scroll down once, you're gonna run into a latest news widget, which has all of the most timely, important information that we really want residents to see if they're coming to the website. If you scroll a little more, you're gonna encounter a big calendar with both city meetings and city events listed on it. And then scroll a little more, you're gonna find some more popular links. And those are constantly changing with the seasons. For example, this last winter, we had a link to the snow emergency webpage. And now I think we have a link to water resources. So, it kind of changes with the seasons and what we are thinking people are coming to the website for. And so, a few other big changes with the website. Accessibility was a big focus of our website redesign. And so, first of all, when they brought that content over from the old website to the new website, they just did a lot of editing to have it meet the new state standards. So, that was great. Civic Plus did a lot of that work for us. But we learned a lot about it too, so we can maintain that as we, as the website is now in our hands. We also have this tool add-on called AudioEye. It's located in the bottom left corner and it has a little pop-up that can adjust how the website looks. And so, there's things like cursor that can help you navigate where you are on the page, things like contrast and color shift that can change how the page is appearing. You can change the font size, you can change the spacing, things like that. So, that's great. We also have a Google Translate add-on. And so, the website can now be translated into many different languages on any of our pages. And so, I'll hop over to the right side of the screen and mention that our Robbinsdale chatbot, which is located in the lower right corner of our webpage, that can also be translated too. So, people can type with that chatbot in any language that they want. And that chatbot is consistently crawling our website and learning new updates to the website and has knowledge of the website and is just there to answer a lot of frequently asked questions that we receive. And that can also be manually trained. In the off chance that it's getting something wrong, I can go in and type an answer for it to make sure that the information that residents are receiving from it is accurate. And then, another thing that I really appreciate about the new website is our e-notification system. We had e-notifications on the old website, but those were just sent directly to peoples, to, to people's emails, which is still the case now, but I think it's great that if I send an email notification to somebody, it also gets placed onto our homepage under that latest news tab. So, people who are subscribed to the news are getting it, but also it's accessible to those who maybe aren't subscribed and just are coming to the website for the latest news information to see what's happening. So, there's multiple ways to access those important news items. I won't go too deeply into this, but I just wanna highlight that with our new website, we have Google Analytics. And this has been really great to take a look at because we didn't have any analytics with our old website or very minimal analytics. And so, I pulled this up as an example. We can see the top ten most visited pages of twenty twenty-five. And so, these kind of things are great to just check on, to make sure that the pages that people are visiting are the most easily accessible and that we're putting those front and center on our homepage to make sure that what people wanna get to, we make it as easy as possible for them to get to. So, yeah, so this website will be great just to give us more opportunities to use data to inform our decisions of how we're designing and structuring the website. Then just a few other ongoing projects and goals that I'll be taking into the rest of twenty twenty-fives. First of all, the Robbinsdale branding efforts. A few of you have been a part of this conversation back since twenty twenty-three. So, we switched over to a new Robbinsdale city logo in twenty twenty-three since it wasn't very high quality and we just really wanted to, and there was a few different versions of it. So, we really wanted to nail down one consistent logo. And we also nailed down our Robbinsdale city colors. And so, we have, we worked with a graphic designer to get a branding guide and all of our logos. And so, this has been a lot of internal work of creating things like a Robbinsdale letterhead, a Robbinsdale PowerPoint, which I'm using tonight, Robbinsdale email signature, just to make sure, really, it's all about consistency and professionalism across the board, just to make sure that we're all using the same logos and all using the same materials. So, when you receive a letter from the city, it's gonna be on the same letterhead regardless of whatever department that comes from. So, that has been a lot of, that's been a big internal project. So, just to go over a summary of changes, the biggest ones have been the redesigned website and also just a lot of that social media strategic thinking. I think that this year, we've been more strategic with what content we're placing on which social media platforms instead of just posting everything on every platform. We've been more strategic of planning ahead. We have a nice big calendar that we plan all of our social media posts out on, which I think helps us to grow our accounts and maintain consistency. We've also just done a lot for design updates. I think the brand refresh is a great example of that. Implementing that brand refresh in our colors and our texts, or our fonts, I should say, into all of our comms. And things like updating the design of the biannual newsletter, which we'll continue to do. So, yeah, those are just a few of the changes. And just wanted to quickly note that my predecessor made this strategic planning document back in twenty twenty-three. And I just wanted to note that this is a ongoing, living document that I continue to reference consistently just to make sure that our communications are in alignment with what was laid out in this document. And a few of the goals mentioned in this document, we're making sure that our communications are strategic, proactive, inclusive, cohesive and collaborative. And so, just wanted to let you know that this document didn't just get pushed aside. It's still something that's very much in our planning and in our minds as we make plans for comms in the future. So, just a few future goals. As I touched on a little bit, creating inclusive and accessible materials is always on the forefront of our minds. materials is always on the forefront of our minds. We've done a little bit with translating some of our communications materials in the past, but that's definitely something that I want to become more consistent with in making sure more of our materials are translated into commonly spoken languages here in Robbinsdale. As for accessible materials, we've come a long way with things like our website, but there's still a lot of learning and work to do with things like our social media content and PDFs and just learning about those accessibility standards from the state, which will go into effect in 2026, just so you all know. And we don't want to just check those standards off either. We also just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can and going above and beyond those standards too to make sure that everyone can access our materials. Aside from that, a lot of these bullets just have to do kind of with storytelling and not only posting informative and informative posts and resources to the community, but also having a little bit of fun with it. And I think we've done some of that with like humanizing the city and sharing some employee spotlights. But also we'd love to really spend more time sharing Robbinsdale stories and highlighting what makes this place so unique. So continuing to look for some of those storytelling opportunities in our communications as well. And so I also just want to make sure you all know that my door is always open and always love to hear any ideas or priorities that you all would love to see in communications, whether that be tonight or anytime in the future. So always appreciate all of your input on communications. So with that, if you have any questions, I am happy to answer.
Well, oh, did you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to give space for other people if they want to jump in.
You're always first.
I know. Thank you for that presentation. Thank you for the work you've done here in the last few years. I think it's really shown, yeah, just how good of a job you're doing. I've liked the improvements. And I appreciate the focus on accessibility for all residents. I think that was a great call out and a good addition to the new website. And I think the one thing I was just trying to look at was on the newsletters. So like, I think the, the biannual city newsletter does a good job of like having a bunch of contact information in there. I think the format kind of allows that because it's like a larger thing and you kind of have a whole page of like where to reach out and find things. But I was just looking at like Birdtown Brief and the utility insert and then the recreation review, and none of those have any of the social media like contact things on there. So I would just consider adding those if you feel like it can fit into the design. And I think that was the only thing that really, that stood out to me. But otherwise, yeah, this is excellent. I feel like we do a good job of providing a lot of content for residents on a, on a regular basis. And oh, that's the other thing I was going to look at, the front page of the, oh yeah, on the website too, on the front page. I like that. You can just scroll down and you can see the social media links because I think for better or for worse, that's where a lot of our updates happen and a lot of people that are seeking those updates tend to go there first. And so I think it's kind of just a natural
Yeah.
way to go about it. But great job. Thanks. More comment.
Thank you for that input about the contact info. That's a good call out for sure. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. Great presentation. And I know I've said this before, but just the enhancement to the technology in this space really brings your presentation to life. So it's nice to see the innovation that you're incorporating into your role in this as well. And I, I'm curious, I, I pull up the website on my mobile device too, and it looks like it reconfigures for like a mobile screen. And I'm curious if that is something that happens by design or if that you worked with the, the website designer to ensure that. I think that is so important. And, you know, future state, I would love to, you know, hear news about an app in development or something like that. But for the time being, it's really great to see the mobile configuration. So maybe you can talk a little bit more about how that came to be.
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea, but maybe in the future.
Future.
Yeah. So that was a big part, a big question that we had initially when we started the conversations with Civic Plus and something that we definitely wanted to ensure because I think probably the majority of our residents are accessing the website on their phones most, more, most frequently. And so Civic Plus did a really great job about just covering that upfront. That's something that they build in from the beginning of the design and something that they continuously showed us throughout the design meetings that we had with them. But of course, sometimes things happen and design gets a little off. So that was also a part of our process was continuously not only checking out things we're looking on the desktop, but also going to our phones and pulling it up and making sure everything was translating over properly because sometimes the homepage would look okay, and then you'd get to an internal page and that was looking a little off. So Civic Plus team is great to work with on that. And they also have been excellent to offer continuing support. So I know that if anything ever gets wonky in the future, they are very quick and responsive to fix those things too. So.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And then just another comment on the accomplishment of a website redesign. I know you shared the timeline of that and many steps in between, but truly to, to go from May to January to design, redesign a website is very, very impressive. So kudos to you and, and all who are involved in that.
Thank you.
Very impressive.
Very appreciated.
I mean, you don't have to, if you want.
No, I mean, I think echoing the council in this, like this has been a tremendous upgrade for our community, our city. And I think this communication is huge, is part of how people connect. So thank you. And I think this continued futuristic way of thinking is really important. So thank you for spending time doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
Just want to say thanks for all your hard work, great presentation. And really just from like the social media, the account, and it feels like there is a lot of interaction in the community goes to it. I guess one question I had around the Birdtown Brief has always been kind of a big deal for people. And it seems like relative to the engagement in, in, at Facebook or, you know, the number of people that are receiving the city newsletter, it's, it's a lot smaller. And is that because, I mean, I know that gets posted on Facebook, so that wouldn't be a digital recipient. But like, is that, is there a reason why that number's lower or?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. I guess there are various ways to access it too. We are posting it on Facebook. And then, as I mentioned, when I send it out via email, it also does get posted on that homepage of the website. But I would say that the people who do read the Birdtown Brief are very excited about the Birdtown Brief and engaged with it and talk about it. So I, maybe that's why you hear about it too often. It's very frequently referenced. But yeah, I think that from my perspective, could definitely do a better job even of pushing that out as a resource and making people aware that, constantly reminding people to subscribe to Birdtown Brief just because it is a, a great resource. And I think there is a lot of really good information in there every week. So yeah.
And just as we think about like new residents moving in, engaging to like get them signed up into it, because I think it's like a really great, I mean, outside of what's happening on Facebook and social media, it's a great way to understand what's happening in our community.
Exactly. Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks.
And I'll just help cap us off. Thank you. Great presentation. Exciting to see the growth. Communication engagements, one of my big things I'd like to see more of with residents and just getting them informed, right, about what's happening in the city. So excellent job in doing that. Good to see the growth. I'll be excited to see what next year brings. And just one thing I'm going to call out here, I don't understand why the police department's not on Instagram. Like, you know, what's, is this, is this something you control or do we need to have a conversation with somebody?
Yeah, that's, I definitely could have some input there. But so they, they run their own Facebook account. It's kind of a mixed bag. I run, they have a LinkedIn actually too. I run that for them. So we definitely could have some conversations about Instagram. It does, it does come down to capacity and who, who would run it and how that would work. But definitely is a discussion that we
I think you could post on Facebook and it just automatically goes to Instagram. So I'm kind of kidding, but I'm kind of not. So.
Yeah, I think it's a good discussion to have. So.
All right.
Absolutely.
Well, nice work. Thank you very, very much.
Yeah, thank you all. I just want to say it's so wonderful to work for a council that's so supportive of improving our communications and just a council that's supportive of staff generally. So it makes the work we do so much easier. So thank you all.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. Next, we have National Public Works Week proclamation. If there's a drum roll, I would do it right now.
Mr. Mayor and council members, good evening. I appear before you tonight to talk about public works and the impact public works has on this community and every community across the country and frankly worldwide. In recognition of the vital role that public works plays, May eighteenth to the twenty-fourth of 2025 is designated as National Public Works Week throughout the country. The theme for this year is people, purpose, presence. Meeting the needs of people is what gives public works, works its sense of purpose. And most times, public works professionals will never meet those whose lives have been impacted. And that is because when things are going right, no one knows what public works, well, no one knows that they're there. With or without fanfare, public works is ever-present, working in the background to advance quality of life for all. In Robbinsdale, as in many other communities, public works manifests itself through a variety of activity focused on supporting what we know as everyday life. These activities are as diverse as parks maintenance, urban forestry, removing carp from the lake, surveying, designing streets, producing safe drinking water, cleaning sanitary sewer pipes, street sweeping, snow plowing, sign replacement, vectoring out CDS units, maintaining our fleet of vehicles, and road pavement repair. Public work serves the community every hour of every day of every month throughout every year. Without the continual effort put forward by public works, life in our community would be a lot more challenging. So Mr. Mayor and council members, in recognition of the week, as well as having this proclamation, we're, we're also offering up some opportunities of tours for our water treatment plant. That will be on Tuesday, the twentieth and Thursday, the twenty-second, at various times during the day. And the sign up sheet is now live on the city website. I'm sure Rachel will also be making posts on social media throughout the week focused on public works. In addition, I'm actually going to be attending a public works award winner reception on Capitol Hill in DC to promote public works to legislators. So while I'm out there in DC, I'm looking to, to get meetings with Representative Omar and Senators Klobuchar and Smith to try and again promote the, the idea of, of public works. So Mr. Mayor and council members, at this state, stage, I, I seek your concurrence with the proclamation included in your meeting packet, and would be happy to stand if there's any questions.
Any questions? I'm going to look to the right this time, just because you always go first. Councilmember Blackledge?
No questions.
Councilmember Greenberg?
No questions. Happy to support.
Yeah. Councilmember Wager?
Yeah, agreed. Happy to support. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Richard. Yeah, as like a IT professional, I'm involved in infrastructure as well. It's just with servers and bits and bytes and whatever. So this speaks to me as well for that. And I'm grateful that you brought it for a tour in front of us. And also I'm very grateful for the public work staff here at City of Robbinsdale. I think they do a great job. And I guess with that, I'll move that we approve the proclamation for National Public Works Week in the city of Robbinsdale.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no or nay. That carries. Richard, thank you. And please thank your staff. You guys are truly amazing. So we appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month proclamation.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Mayor, council, as you're aware, the city council has established a, I think, a pretty strong precedent of celebrating certain types of diversity, celebrating as, through these types of proclamations, other efforts, of course, as well. We have an internal staff DEI committee that annually takes on certain types of efforts. And one of the suggestions was to bolster this program up a little bit. So I don't want to say adding to, certainly the focus, some of the more traditional that we've done, Black History Month, celebrating pride in June, are some that we've done annually for a number of years, but looking to bolster that program up a bit. So being intentional in, in how we're trying to promote our inclusiveness, making these type of calls is important to staff. No, it's important to council as well. Certainly won't read through the entirety, but that's the intention of putting this in front of you here tonight. Of course, staff is happy to respond to questions, comments, and concerns.
Questions or comments? Concerns? Yeah.
I will just say, very happy to see this addition. And thanks to the committee of DEI advocates for bringing this forward. And I am very happy to support this.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for bringing this to us and the, yeah, just as, I guess I'll just echo what Councilmember Parisian said. My partner is a member of the AAPI community. And so this, I guess, is very personal for me as well. I think it's good to recognize, as we try to do throughout the year, Americans of all stripes and backgrounds. And I think so, this is, May, I guess, is this month, which is great. So I also just wanted to just call out the, you know, this, putting this forward to kind of a, I hope to, that it fosters like a sense of solidarity among all people because in this part of the world, you know, there's heightened tensions between India and Pakistan. And I just, this isn't going to change any of that, but I just want us to, I think as Councilmember Blackledge so rightfully points out at every meeting that we should be saying hi to our neighbors and being, you know, in community with one another. So I think this does a good job of, of moving that forward. So thank you and thank you for bringing this forward.
Comments? Questions? Okay. So we're looking for a motion then to adopt the proclamation?
I will move, Mr. Mayor. I will move that we adopt the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month proclamation.
I'll second.
Excellent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. That proclamation is, is here. Okay. Well, thank you for that. Let's move on to the public hearings. We've got three items tonight. First is the second reading, 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 second reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash zero four amending section eight fifteen dot zero seven of the Robbinsdale City Code.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'll be brief on this one. This is a bit of an unusual circumstance in a couple of ways. The item was first discussed back in 2024 after going through steps and chatting with the DNR. It was, come to the conclusion that a couple of the boxes weren't checked, so to speak. Having now done that, we brought this back for a first reading. The second caveat of a bit of nuance required a public hearing on their side for the first reading. Traditionally, we do a public hearing advertised afterwards for the second round. So that's why you're hosting a second public hearing. Very unusual set of circumstances. But again, as we walked through this a few times, really this has a couple of corrections you can see in the attached resolution or ordinance, excuse me, twenty-five dash oh four is noted through the traditional strikeout and bold and underlying language, most prominently striking on mechanical powerboat, motorboat, intending that to any auto, auto craft, watercraft, excuse me, and may only be operated between sunrise and sunset. There was one thing that I did want to call out when we were first went through this during the last public hearing. There was a question about the no wake language that was further down, and I cited the incorrect code number, but that has been called on your memo here. So again, staff's recommendation is to hold the public hearing, consider a comment, and then ultimately make approval of the attached ordinance. Staff is happy to respond to questions, comments, or concerns before or after the public hearing.
Council, any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Still moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no or nay? All right, public hearing is open.
Mr. Mayor, hearing none, no comments from the public, I will move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay? Okay, so now we're going to approve the ordinance?
I will move that we waive the second reading of the ordinance number twenty-five dash zero four amending section, section eight one five dot oh seven of the Robbinsdale City Code.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay? Okay, it is waived.
Perhaps did I, should I make a new motion to order the adoption of as well, I don't know that I included that language in my motion.
Just wondering the same.
In that case, I will move that we waive the second reading and order the adoption of ordinance number twenty-five dash oh four amending section eight one five dot oh seven of the Robbinsdale City Code.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay? There carries, okay, moving on to, thank you, moving on to the second item, public hearing on proposed water rates for North Memorial.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, this is an item that's been talked about even longer ago, for those keeping score at home, longstanding agreement with North Memorial that once water was treated to proper levels, that service would be connected to city service here provided by the City of Robbinsdale, not Minneapolis, that agreement actually dates back to nineteen fifty-seven. In the last couple of years, as the new water treatment plant went online, staff from both the city and North Memorial have been meeting to not just produce an effective plan to make the connection, but also to ensure operations run properly. We're now at that point, we don't have any scheduled dates, but do want to establish a rate for that. As a reminder, utility rates are adopted a bit different than the fee schedule, we've gone through that process recently, but something we typically do annually, typically adopted in early December and observed effective January one, our recommendation to staff is to adopt this single change in your utility fee schedule, which you can find is the second attachment with that rate at seven dollars per one thousand gallons. So again, with that, as we have discussed, staff is certainly happy to respond to questions, comments, or concerns, but making the recommendation to open the public hearing and ultimately motion to adopt a resolution that is attached.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
I'll move to open the public hearing on the proposed water rates for North Memorial.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay? Okay, public hearing is open.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing, hearing no comments from the public.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I just wanted to have a question about this. Thank you, Mayor. The, so Tim, this is a kind of a preliminary, at least in my mind, I'm kind of seeing it as like a preliminary rate set, and we can always change this in the future, kind of at our discretion, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor and Council, Councilmember Wagner, that is spot on, I would note, we've spent diligent time in the last two years, really going over what their current use is, to ensure that we align, some nuance certainly between how charges are processed, you know, it's not a single-family residence, you know, more infrastructure, more valves, more things that maybe Minneapolis charges X for, whereas we charge Y for, but this puts us in a good rate, we believe, for the rest of two thousand and twenty-five, but I think to your question, if adjustments need to be made, we certainly can.
Gotcha. Yeah, because I just want to just call out that, because they're gonna use more than forty thousand gallons, so in my mind, when I'm looking at the difference for North Memorial and a resident, it's, you know, a fifteen dollar per one thousand gallon difference, now it's not a perfect measurement, but that's kind of in the utility rate here, so I just want us to be mindful of that. There is a difference between, you know, what the residents are being charged and what North Memorial is, now, my, my personal justification for that would be because of the volume that they're going to use, and also that they are providing a public service and, you know, providing a public good by giving healthcare to folks, a lot of them are, that are on Medicare and Medicaid, right, that's the vast majority of patients that they see. So with that in mind, I'm comfortable doing this, but I just want us to remember to revisit this, whether it's I'm on the council or somebody else, whatever, that we can always look at this again, because it is, it is a discount, and we want them to remain in Robbinsdale, we want to incentivize that, but at the same time, residents are paying a different price, and so that has to be recognized as well. With that, yeah, I would, I'll support the, this kind of first introductory rate, this is the first time we're doing this, maybe that's the other thing I'll add, you know, they haven't been connected to our water before, we have to start somewhere, and we can always readjust.
So, I mean, and I appreciate the, the point you're making, because it is, there's a large discrepancy between a, a single-family home or a residence and what the hospital's gonna use, but I think it's also from a volume standpoint, I guess just one question, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, but like, what percentage of homes in Robbinsdale, the residents in Robbinsdale use over forty thousand gallons of water? I'd have to think it's like relatively a very small percentage.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, Councilmember Greenberg, incredibly small percentage, the way that rate schedule, is what I would describe it as, is set up, frankly, in some circumstances, is to discourage that level of water use. There are some folks that, you know, in whatever utility connection it might be, a faucet, a toilet, your hose, might leave it on if there weren't ramifications for running thousands of gallons a day. This, you know, does provide a bit of responsibility, similarly on our end, you know, when we catch those things through, through our new water meters, we're able to, you know, address them right away, again, phone calls, emails, depending on how you're connected with the city, so that level, there is that discrepancy. One other call-out I should make, you know, it is a flat rate, and we do have the advantage of understanding, again, based across the last couple of years, like with residents, to a different degree, certainly consumption ebbs and flows, but we've got roughly, the line is X, and if we know the line is X, to produce X, you know, plus what we're currently producing, is gonna cost Y, so that's how we make that adjustment. You know, there, there would be bigger variations, I would say, percentage-wise, thinking by way of single-family homes who might water their lawn or have a pool, in, you know, June, July, August, you consume a lot more water, whereas North Memorial is far more consistent, so that's why it's a single flat rate, and we don't tier it.
And I think one other thing, just to point out for residents, that I've had, you know, just in conversations with city engineer and, and city staff, but the idea that, you know, from a, the systems that we have in place, there's a lot of variability of up and down with just residential use, and there are benefits to the City of Robbinsdale for the fact that there will be a consistent and high-level use once North Memorial is online, so there is a benefit there that impacts the entire city as well, so I feel like that's worth mentioning.
Yeah, has long-term been the goal to be more efficient with that high consistent usage. If the city engineer has interest in coming up and chatting about that, I can ramble on for a moment, but yeah, that's long been the intention, part of the planning process for when water treatment was originally suggested to council and ultimately supported, but yeah, with those efficiencies, it's gained, or it's, it's understand to gain positive across the community.
Yeah, council members and, or council members, having a, a big user like that, that's gonna be, you know, have a very higher level, but consistent, water usage will be better for the water treatment plant. Right now, we're, we're kind of at that stage where if there's no demand, we kind of shut the plant down, but then we have to ramp it back up if, if demand starts to go, go higher. By being able to just run it along at a steady rate, that's a lot easier on all the equipment, it's, you're not, you're not peaking your electrical uses and things like that, so there is some benefits to be gained by having a big user like that, that we can just troll the system along at a, at a steady rate for a longer period of time, rather than start-stop and all that sort of business. So there, there is benefit to be gained that way, and that was tried to be reflected a little bit in, in the rate that was set.
Thank you. Other questions? I, I do have one, and this is likely a topic for a future work session, if it is even feasible, but I just want to comment and acknowledge that anytime the conversation about your utility bill of water comes up, residents grow a little bit, because it's, it's, it's getting up there. And I appreciate that we are doing the best we can, and I fully see the value of not needing a water softener and the lifespan that my appliances are now getting because of the new water treatment plant, that is real and is significant. However, the bill is still high. Is there a possibility that in a future work session, we could just talk about, just, just so I get it out of my head, and maybe it's a conversation we have outside of a work session, me and you, Tim, or me and you, Richard, just to understand, is there a world that exists where we can bring the utility rates down, or just freeze them? Or maybe that's already intentioned? So, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I know I'm definitely doing that, but I just had to say it, because I think some residents are probably asking it in their head right now.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'll jump in first and let Mr. McCoy have a second crack, the, the longstanding intention has been to level off increases, no doubt about it, with the investment of the water treatment plant, other recent infrastructure, upcoming infrastructure, there have been jumps in bills, but that's been forecast, a part of the annual doings, whether through your capital improvement plan, you can see, as mentioned in the memo here, every few handful of years, we go through a formal utility rate study to ensure it's not just city staff crunching the numbers on these things. I always provide the, the reminder, you know, you've got hundred-year-old infrastructure that we're not just repairing, we're replacing, so we, we do have this roadmap to go forward, we fully recognize, you know, the bumps that we've incurred the last few years, but certainly to level off is the goal going forward, we're projecting that at current, we don't have a percentage at this point, by way of zero, candidly, I think a reduction is tough, just by way of, you know, costs, labor, everything across the board, until that becomes zero, that, that becomes hard for us to match. But I, I guess from, you know, my seat, I guess that's the story I tell people, and certainly Mr. McCoy can get more into the nuts and bolts.
Mr. Mayor, council members, in theory, there is a point where you, you would have a period of time where your expenditure would be minimized, however, as a first-ring suburb, we're kind of in the thick of having to replace all of our infrastructure, all of the, the water mains under the ground, we still have one hundred-year-old, four-inch diameter water mains running through a lot of this city. So the demand on being able to have funding to replace all of that infrastructure is really high. You're gonna find other cities, second-ring suburbs, start to enter this phase very soon, and then you'll see their water prices start to elevate as well, we're, we're kind of twenty years into the process already. The, the big hits to the, the water rates have been the construction of the new water treatment plant, but that was, again, an entirely necessary construction, and that's a, you know, once in a number of generations construction. The new water tower, the, the only real big-ticket item, I would say, that's left is, is the second water tower. Once we get that constructed, all the big stuff is, is done for seventy, eighty years. You know, we've got the PFAS issue that, that, you know, is on the horizon, funding for that will, will hopefully be sought from sources other than ratepayers. But, you know, once we, we get all that big infrastructure replaced and, and deal with, with the other issues that get thrown at us, it's a steady then pace to, to be able to reconstruct streets and take those old water mains out of the ground, so in theory, there is a point where we'll be done. Now, that still might be thirty years down the track, but then there'll be a period of time before we have to start to do it all again. And, and that will be the time where all the other cities will then be catching up and probably surpassing Robbinsdale, because we, we got into it early and have done so much of it already. So that's kind of a, a weird response to your question.
No, I mean, it's, it's great perspective, and I think it's, it's a hard truth that we all need to hear, right? Because there's benefits of living in a first-ring suburb, I mean, we're the greatest little town in the middle of everywhere, right? And so, you know, with that comes the cost of having to replace things. One more question I'll ask, is I often hear, well, not often, some residents have said, well, my water quality is still terrible, and I'm like, if it's all going through the same pipes, how can that be true, unless there's problems with pipes going into the house or in the house themselves? What would your response be as an expert in this area to somebody who would tell you that?
Mr. Mayor, we, we get those concerns occasionally, what we offer to do, you know, we, we get people that call us up and say, hey, I've got a, a certain water company out here, and they're telling me why my, my hardness is still X, and we've even had them ring up and, and tell us that the hardness was more than it was when we had the old system, so I'm not quite sure how that works, but, you know, we're happy to, to go out there and test their hardness, and say, well, I don't know what, what he was doing at the time, but no, that's not right. So we, we love going out and, you know, talking to our residents and doing the test for them to say, well, no, that's not really the case.
Yeah, and just to be clear, every resident in Robbinsdale, we're all on the same water, correct?
Yep.
Excellent, thank you. Richard?
Mayor?
Yes.
Just to your funding points, Tim, do you know where the legislature is at with the sales tax stuff that, for Robbinsdale, and then would Water Tower Two and/or Water Main Infrastructure qualify as a project for a sales tax under these proposals, proposed like bill or law or whatever? Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, Councilmember Wagner, great question, last version of the tax language I saw included, it, it had to be a, a community good or regional good, so oftentimes they were trying to limit projects that were, I think, solely good for Robbinsdale, so maybe a community center that served all of, you know, the Northwest Metro, that would qualify, whereas, I, I don't want to give an example, because I'll get in trouble, that may not qualify. So that was most current. The second was that potentially, and I think that the long-term goal is to get it out of the legislative process, communities would still have to have a referendum to be able to go forward, so, so that would be good for us, that we would still be, if that's something that the council wanted to go forward with, we would be able to host a referendum to consider that. We do have the, the back-end sort of study done in anticipation of what was gonna happen, so as soon as we get clarity, that's something that, that will bring to council.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to get some more context, just I know it's, it's shifting, the tax is shifting somewhere else, but it's, you know, maybe another way to think about keeping utility bills flatter. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Where are we at right now? We need to make a, make a recommendation.
We did the public hearing, I believe, and then, so yeah, I will move that we waive the reading and vote to approve the resolution establishing city water rates in the City of Robbinsdale effective for all usage beginning today, May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay? That carries, all right. On to chickens. Uh, next we have a permit for chickens at forty-three fifty-one France Avenue North.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, Derek Pats of forty-three fifty-one France Avenue North has submitted a domestic animal application per city code, we, they are required that this person, keeping or maintaining- Uh, per city code, uh, we, they are required, uh, that this person keeping or maintaining more than two chickens in turn up, obtain a permit, excuse me, um, and that all owners, uh, and properties within two hundred feet be notified, uh, in advance of this public hearing. That process had been gone through. Notification and publication was, uh, uh, executed with the date of May sixth. Um, we'll note a couple of things. Uh, staff is, uh, of course recommending to host a public hearing, uh, and then does recommend approval, um, does have a couple of items there. Uh, as sometimes happens as his permits come in, the, uh, chicken coop, as it were, uh, may not be completed. So we do have some uh, caveats that they are required to abide by for the permit to be approved. Those are items A through F on your memo. But again, with those, uh, considerations, staff does make recommendation for approval. Of course, before or after the, uh, public comment period, staff is happy to respond to questions, comments or concerns.
Any initial questions before we open? Open up for the public? Okay. Motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, open the public hearing and take public comment.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no or nay? Public comment period is open and.
Seeing as no one is, uh, has anything to comment, we will, uh, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay? Public hearing is closed. Okay. Before we move on, any other questions? Last chance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I am curious, I know that, um, owners of all adjacent properties or properties within two hundred feet have been notified. Um, I'm wondering if the staff has received any comment from neighbors on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Parisian staff has not received any feedback.
Great, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
My question was just, or just clarification, there are the, um, the conditions A through F. Uh, is it your, are you, is it the understanding that this hasn't begun this additional structure? Or this is just not complete and so these are, that's why we're having the conditions?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Ringberg, uh, good question. Uh, for the permit to be, uh, completed and approved, all of these conditions would need to be, um, executed. So I know not a sense of urgency, but it's that time of year where people want to get going on these projects rather than draw it out for an extra two weeks. Um, it's staff's intention to say, yes, we'll approve it as long as all these things are done.
Okay. But we don't know, do we know if they've started building or not? We don't know.
My understanding is that, uh, maybe a roughed-out area has begun, uh, but certainly not completed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Hearing none. I will move that we approve the request of up to six chickens at forty-three fifty-one France Avenue North, subject to conditions A through F.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay? Congratulations, Derek, on your chickens. Okay. Uh, let's see, on to old business. A second, the second reading and adoption of an ordinance adding section eleven sixty-five cannabis and L P H E business regulations to Robbinsdale City Code, Chapter eleven, Business and Trade Regulations. And amending, amending City Code, Chapter five, Planning and Land Use Regulations, Sections five twenty, five twenty-one, five twenty-five, for the purpose of establishing zoning requirements for the state-licensed cannabis and lower potency hemp edible business in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Heather Rand. I'm the Community Development Director for the city. Um, yes, this is a second reading and perhaps then an adoption, um, of an ordinance that relates to these proposed changes in our city code. Um, this became, um, something for our council to address, uh, really as a follow-up to when the state legalized, um, cannabis retail and other businesses and what they are now calling, um, um, low potency hemp edibles. Um, this is, um, again legalization for individuals who are over twenty-one years of age. And it's very important that, um, the state now regulates the licensure of these businesses with background checks and whatnot. Um, that takes the city out of the licensure business, um, but it does, um, now and according to the language, um, that we are proposing, have the city instead register the businesses so that we have a good sense of where they're being placed, i.e. location or zoning, um, hours of operation. Uh, we want to make sure, um, in our community, we've heard that there's some enforcement by our local police or law enforcement. Um, and also limiting, um, if there's, um, buffers around, um, or close to schools. Um, again, just trying to limit and treat these businesses very similar to, um, I would say tobacco sales in our city and/or liquor sales. So that's what you have in front of you then. And I think it's important to note though, that we will be partners with the state more directly, the Minnesota Office of Cannabis Management. Um, they will notify us when there's an applicant that they deem, um, pre-licensed, they've met various requirements. Um, and then we'll take a look in the future, uh, if you adopt this at our ordinance and determine if what they want to do when it comes to these types of businesses fits within the scope of our ordinance in terms of, again, location, hours of operation. Um, and then we'll have that enforcement piece. Now, there are a couple of other components, um, as I, again, just review very broad overview of what's in the ordinance. Um, there is, um, an allowance for special permitting. Um, there is also a prohibition of using, um, cannabis projects, or excuse me, products um, within public facilities, um, public parks, right-of-way, um, city streets, sidewalks, et cetera. So I wanted to make that clear. And then you as a city council, um, actually gave us input as staff and we drafted this such that we would start out somewhat conservatively, um, in the eyes of some and allow for up to two retail cannabis establishments. Knowing that perhaps though, depending on how this goes in a year, two years, three years, maybe you would add more. Um, you also, um, instructed us to draft this proposed ordinance language that would become city code such that, um, our municipal liquor store could in the future get involved in cannabis sales uh, to adults, similar to liquor. So that's the overview. I wanted to remind you that this did have, especially the components that were related to zoning were heard with a public hearing that was properly note, uh, noticed, um, at a planning commission meeting. Um, also, um, you as a city council had a public hearing on April fifteenth. Um, to date, we've had, I'd say, very limited public input, but what we really are doing, I think, has been, um, um, for the most part, uh, pretty non-controversial. Um, again, because we've been following what the legislature is recommending and also adhering to controlling the sale, uh, of these types of products um, in a manner that is very similar to tobacco and alcohol sales. Um, so that's my overview. And with that, I want you to know that staff does recommend approval tonight. Your second reading and you have the ordinance. Um, and then, uh, it would go into effect upon its publication if you are so inclined to approve. With that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Heather. Um, council, any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, Heather. And just, I guess I just wanted to say thanks to staff for their engagement on this and for staying on top of it. There's been a lot of changes at the state level. There's been not a lot of, I think clarity maybe has gotten a little better because things have settled down, but at the beginning, it certainly was very much up in the air and what any of this was going to look like. And so I think, yeah, just that staff time, just going, kind of just hammering away at this, uh, over and over again to kind of get to where we are. Just wanted to recognize that. So thank you. I also wanted to say, thank the city council for their work on this too. We've, yeah, it's been alluded to. We've been talking about this for a long time. And so it's good to see, uh, at least this piece of it in front of us tonight. So thanks to the, my colleagues for that. And then just, again, Robbinsdale businesses, Robbinsdale community uh, and residents for their, um, questions and curiosity about this and just their patience with this whole process as well. Because there is just, uh, you know, it's a new thing. So people are going to wonder about it and just wanted to call all of that out and didn't have any other question or didn't have a question, so.
Um, I have a question. So prior to this, I'm sorry, there's bypassing. Okay. So prior to this point, we didn't have any laws or regulations around, um, smoking cannabis or, I mean, it was legal, right? But, but in public parks and public settings and so, correct?
Well, there's a no, probably no drug policy.
I'm just saying that, yeah, there's, there's times you can walk around, you can smell it. I'm just pointing out the fact that we're now setting a rule in place saying you can't.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I think, uh, an excellent question in that there maybe was some ambiguity. Um, there is a no smoking policy. There's a no drug use policy. Uh, so technically, could we interpret, uh, smoking marijuana as a federal, uh, uh, federal level one narcotic? Certainly. Um, that becomes difficult to enforce. Uh, I don't want to say we held off. Part of, part of, um, is the low potency edible and use language was approved by statute. I believe that was twenty-three. Um, some of that was immediate and we weren't ready at that point to address code. Uh, so we decided at that point, we're going to kind of wait and see how prevalent it was, uh, react as appropriate. Um, you know, I continue to encourage folks that if there is a consumption issue of any type of narcotic, uh, to, to contact us, but um, I guess plainly spoken, the, the language that's being proposed, you know, really solidifies, uh, that it, it is a prohibited act.
Okay, great. Thanks for the clarification. Anyone else? Alright. Do we have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to waive the second reading of the proposed code changes and approve the ordinance.
Second.
Alright, sure. All, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay? Okay. Well, there you have it. A new day has, has come.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on. Nice work, Heather. Thank you. Uh, we are on to the second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter four, Building, Housing and Construction Regulations.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, again, this is the second reading. Um, we tackled this, um, a couple of weeks ago for first reading. Really what we're doing is trying to eliminate some redundancy. I know that you want your staff to add value and not charge people um, fees for something that perhaps the state is already doing and that's what's happening. Um, and we're trying to rectify that in our code right here. In other words, or more specifically, right now, we're a city that, um, basically requires a license and, and then individuals to pay or companies a license fee if they are a contractor wanting to do business, um, that is performing plumbing, um, carpentry, masonry, um, electrical work. Um, that probably was incredibly important, um, over ten years ago. But now we have the State of Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry that also licenses these contractors. They check their credentials. They check that they have insurance. They check that they are indeed incorporated in the State of Minnesota. And then they post it on the Dolly or Department of Labor and Industry website. So that cities such as us, when individuals apply for a building permit, we can go and make sure that indeed they are licensed by the state. So for that reason, we are suggesting that in our code, we eliminate any requirements that the city license these businesses. Again, because it's redundant, we're not adding value. So that's it in a nutshell.
Excellent. Any questions? Comments?
Not a question, but a, a comment just because of the conversations that happened that aren't necessarily included in this while we're waiving this, uh, city fee, that there are some offsets that are happening, the way we're changing some of the structure of other things that kind of help balance some of that. So it isn't just like we're getting rid of this and that's a standalone thing. There are other pieces of, of this puzzle that are being put in place to kind of help balance everything. Or maybe just speak to that really quickly?
I'd be happy to, if I may, Mr. Mayor and Councilor Greenberg. Um, what you're referring to is, is tonight on your consent agenda, you approved some fee increases for the minimum fees that the city would charge, um, for some really basic construction-type projects. Um, and again, minimum, those fees are typically based on the, um, the estimated value of a project. So if the estimated value is, uh, two thousand dollars or less, oftentimes we would only charge fifty dollars. And I say only because fifty dollars is still fifty dollars, but what we weren't, um, cognizant of and keeping up with in our fee structure is the cost that it takes for staff to actually process and address that, um, that building permit. Um, I, I think it was end of January, we, the city, um, with your help, entered into a contract with a uh, consulting firm, Rum River Consulting, to perform our building inspection, build, building permit, uh, function. They have, and worked with us and did a careful analysis of what the true costs actually are. And they actually work in, um, now they're up to about thirty different cities in the metro area. And so the, the cost work that they've done, um, and this is what it actually costs when, whether it's an individual who's applying a permit on some carpentry work they're doing in their home or it's an electrical or plumbing contractor, when, if you can think about it, they now go online, they apply for the permit. Um, and what happens is Rum River will review their application. They have then, um, a permit techs who do the intake and take the payment online. Um, so you need a website, a portal, all of that has a cost. And then communicating with the actual customer who applied, um, in terms of timeline and, and then they also, um, will issue the permit. Um, pending inspection. And then when the project is complete, they will send, um, uh, an actual representative of building inspector with credentials to go out and inspect the job. Um, if you think about it, again, in, in the past, we were charging fifty dollars for those basic permits, not recouping our costs, if you think of all that staff time that was involved. So what you approved earlier tonight was a fee increase from fifty to a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Seems like a, a big jump, um, but it really is a more true reflection of that minimum cost of sending that building inspector out in the field. And just to remind everyone, the reason why we do this is to help keep people safe. But also when they're making investments in their property, we want to make sure things are being done according to state building code. So. So you are correct, um, Councilor Greenberg. On one hand, some of these fees are going down. We're not requiring this redundant licensing process, but we are requiring a fee increase for those more modest construction projects so that our general fund isn't subsidizing, uh, that work. But instead, it's the actual individuals who need that service. Alright?
Great, thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Get a motion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we waive the second reading and order the adoption of ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-six, uh, amending Chapter four, Building, Housing and Construction Regulations, Section four oh five, for licensed construction activities of the Robbinsdale City Code.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay? Motion carries. Okay. Onto new business. Uh, we have got the, right, we're on this right? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, we're, alright, on to new business. First read, uh, first reading, uh, ordinance amending City Code, sign ordinance, Chapter five, planned in, planning in land use, Section four-ten, signs. Wow. I struggled with that.
Very good. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So first reading, um, on this one, obviously. Uh, what we want to talk about here, um, has actually come through the planning commission with a recommendation. Um, it pertains to, you know, when we say city code, city code are our rules. In this case, it more specifically relates to Chapter five, which is what we often refer to as our city zoning ordinance or planning and land use. And we have a section, six-ten, that pertains to signs. Um, tonight we're proposing three. What I can- what I consider modest changes. And in fact, one of them is more or less a clarification of what we believe past city councils originally intended with respect to banners. So let's address that as I move forward tonight. The first change that's proposed, and I had a PowerPoint, but I don't think it's coming up. So that's okay. Let me just speak through this. It was 10 slides and night's getting long anyway. So let me just recap. But the first proposed change is to allow the inclusion of small signs in residential neighborhoods that are non-controversial, non-commercial in nature. Think in terms of, you might have seen, maybe it's a, you know, happy birthday stand, or welcome home from the army, you know, Ed, or maybe it's Black Lives Matter, or happy St. Patrick's Day, those small signs that pop up that are more decorative in nature. Were you going to look? Thank you. Second change has to do with banners. You might recall, we had a banner issue where we had an individual who popped up a banner. It was large. And in our code, while staff's interpretation was, it was very clear. It said there can be no large 50-foot banner signs in residential neighborhoods. We did all agree. Let's, let's try to make that more clear. So tonight, what you have in front of you is some, I think, very crystal clear language, that the banner signs are not permitted within residential neighborhoods. There is also a mechanism for special permits for temporary signs in commercial areas. Again, this pertains to banners. And rather than for those special signs that are for 10 days or less, I think some of them have to do with whiz bang days, to be quite honest, we are suggesting that rather than the city council approving those, that our city manager approves them, again, because they're 10 days or less and they are in commercial districts. And then the third item that we're suggesting be changed tonight, and you give consideration, is some new language that would allow for what I refer to as real estate signs, the for sale, whatever realty company, here's our number. You see them pop up in residential neighborhoods. Our interpretation as staff is our old ordinances technically would prohibit that type of sign. So we've added a provision now that would allow for that. We don't want to put our residents in the position of not being able to have those signs. So we're bringing our code more or less up to date. So that's what we're talking about. Just a quick reminder, there is a preamble in our signed ordinance that talks about, and why do we do this, right? Why is a city council and staff, why do we have these rules? And it says it's to protect and preserve the integrity of residential areas, to reduce traffic and safety hazards. If you think about road directional signs, we want to make sure people aren't putting signs in front of them so they can't see the one-way sign, that type of thing. And then the, the whole issue of just, I would say, the looks, the viability of a neighborhood, its character, its feel versus a commercial area. We try to be very clear about that. So here's the example of, you know, kind of a fun one, but, you know, the type of sign we were talking about where, hey, we think they're out there anyway in residential neighborhoods. So let's acknowledge that, but, but let's have some controls so we don't get too out of control. And I want to again remind you that city staff, we do not get out there and proactively do code compliance or cite people when they violate our code unless there's a safety hazard, or a neighbor complains, or someone in the city complains. So if somebody has a bunch of these signs, unless there's a complaint, we probably would just drive by them as we're out there in code enforcement and more focused on safety issues. But we now are suggesting, let's embrace what's happening. Let's update our code. So allow for some of these small signs, but, but limit the size and the square footage and see if we can live with that. If not, perhaps you'll want to change it again. So in the code now, we are suggesting that individuals in R1, R2, R3, so our residential neighborhoods, can have up to three of these small signs that are up to three feet in height and a maximum cumulative square footage of 15 square feet. It's not that much. With respect to the banner change that I spoke to, we want to be very clear that we don't want large banners, especially advertising something that's commercial in nature in our residential neighborhoods. It all comes down to, in this case, we're trying to be more clear in our language and then also, you know, shifting that authority for those permits for the signs that can go up for 10 days to the city manager, just so we're being speedy and efficient. Here's a specific language where it talks about how we're adding the sentence, if it's bolded and underlined, banners are prohibited in all residential districts except RB, that's residential business. It's a special district we have that transitions to business from residential. And then you see that language about city manager where we struck the city council. And then lastly, the real estate signs, picture of one, and we're wanting to just add that into our language so that, again, our residents aren't being placed in a situation where they're non-compliant, when they didn't mean to. So here's our language. We get very specific about the size, the height, et cetera, and that they have to be removed after a sale. So just to remind you, in terms of public process, our Planning Commission did hold a hearing on this, these suggested code changes on April 17. No members of the public did come forward and speak to them. We did have one Planning Commission member who originally expressed some concern that perhaps, especially the language pertaining to not having banners, might be a freedom of speech issue from his perspective. We as staff did remind him that state law, though, does require or enable individuals to have signs that pertain to the election of candidates or special referendum, so political signs. And actually, that's, I think it's 20 days before a primary election or a general election, and then they have to come down, I think, within seven days post-election. With that, that, the one Planning Commissioner said now he felt a little more comfortable. And again, I'd say, as a whole, I think it's really important that a city not try to regulate the content of the speech, and our attorneys would tell us that as well. Instead, we're trying to regulate the size, the scope, and how it fits into the character of, say, a residential neighborhood versus a commercial business district. So the vote was 3-1, with one of our commissioners still trying to figure out how he felt about this. And he said he also was voting no, because he was hopeful that it would get your attention in general, and you would think about this before you passed it. So the other three were very solid in support, and we had one absent that evening. So with that, our staff's recommendation is to make these changes. We feel they're adequate and reasonable updates. And of course, if we find it's not working in the future, I'm sure we will take that input and your express, if you express some concerns, we can make changes in the future. But to us, it's really important to reflect the times. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd just let you take up the ordinance as you see fit, or if you have questions, we'll answer.
Yeah. Thank you, Heather. Counsel, any questions?
I have one question clarification. So when I read this originally, the, the one piece B in about size, properties have a 15-square-foot cumulative maximum for signs. And I was trying to understand if that meant cumulative, like, on their property, or, I mean, you clarified in the conversation, but just the fact that I thought that in reading it and was like, does that mean, like, I can't go over 15 square feet in my yard? Or is that 15 square feet of signage in my yard, which is the second? But just curious, like, is there, do you think there's any, like, did I just read it weird? And, or is that something that could be misconstrued?
So I, I appreciate you wanting more clarification on that. And you are correct. Our, in, our intent in drafting this was, when we say cumulative, to mean the sign face cumulative. We didn't want to limit, maybe one individual want to have two signs that combined cumulatively, the sign faces will be 15 feet. Maybe an individual, as long as it's no higher than three feet high, will want it one a little bit longer. At least we know they won't be 50 feet long like a banner. I, I'm uncertain how we could draft that to be more clear. We can give that some thought between now and the second reading, though. So I appreciate your comment.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Greenberg, if I may follow up. I think if that were the interpretation, we wouldn't be in trouble. It wouldn't exceed the side of the signage. Maybe the only clarifier were if somebody were to call and ask, we could certainly provide that, whether it's the person with the signage and/or somebody concerned about an infraction, we could certainly walk them through that, that's our interpretation of it. But if they thought the limitation was by way of yard space, that would still limit you just to that same size. So I, even if that is the interpretation, I guess I wouldn't have concern by way of enforcement.
Okay. That's a good point. Thank you.
Councilmember Wagner, did you have your hand up?
No, I was just signaling that Tim was looking for recognition. Thanks, though.
Any comments or questions?
I just want to say I learned a lot about signs, read and do this. Just to be honest, like, there's a lot of work that goes into this, and I say thank you because this, yeah, it was very in-depth, very in-depth.
It was. And Mr. Mayor and Councilor Blackledge, I mean, maybe I should apologize to you. There's a lot of nitty-gritty there. We as staff, though, I, I hope you know, we really try to work on just educating people and not have, you know, the heavy hand as we approach this. I never expect people to know all of this. And that's why, when it comes to signs especially, please always encourage them to give us a call in planning. We'd love to talk through with them what they want to do.
I have questions, and I actually have comments. So name, tell me, because my history on the council is, is limited to this this year, has signage, has this been a problem for Robbinsdale and neighborhoods where people have put up signs and it's creating a great disturbance?
Mr. Mayor, Council, so from time to time, we do get complaints. The, maybe the impetus of the banner language was specific to something that we interpreted in the fall. That'd be the most recent example. The enforcement component, you know, unless there's very direct language, becomes difficult. You know, some neighbors are much more free and willing to, you know, see additional signage in the neighbor's yard. Some people don't want to see it. So until there's an agreed upon structure as to what that looks like, we, we have little to stand on. So historically, sure, if, if you're looking for, like, a set of examples from recent history, we'd be happy to put that together.
Okay, thank you. I, I struggle with this because I think of signs like, it's a boy, welcome home Mitchell from the Marines, you know, things like that, that somebody might want to create a big banner and really announce to the neighborhood that, hey, we've got something exciting to announce here. Or Eagles Nest, Broadway Pizza, if they have a banner that says, free lunch buffet, all right, not free lunch buffet, well, sorry, I didn't mean it, but saying they, they're advertising a lunch buffet. And I did hear that they had a banner that was out, advertised lunch buffet, somebody complained, they had to take it down. And it's, it's just, that, that doesn't feel good to me, that we're limiting people from expressing themselves. And I feel that, you know, if it's offensive, of course, right? But if it's a, offensive by way of, like, you know, offensive language, right? Like, I just, you don't want to incite violence. You don't want to be crude, you know, there's, there's probably, you know, some demeanor that people could follow. I just, I really struggle with this in, in limiting people and putting a sign up on their business or putting a sign up on their property because, at the end of the day, I don't, I personally don't feel like it's a big problem. And it just feels, I don't want to say punitive, but it just, it feels like this is coming up in a way that just, like, this isn't a problem, right? So why are we, why are we making it one? Counsel, I'm, I'm open to your input on this. So I don't want to think I'm just...
I mean, from my perspective, I mean, I just think it's, it's good to be clear and have rules in place because we do run into issues where there are questions. And if we don't have it in an ordinance and it, it isn't spelled out, then it leaves so much gray area, which, you know, for better or worse, again, it's not about the content of the sign. It's just, I feel like there are provisions for people to, like, if they want to have something up for a couple of days or whatever, it's like, not a big deal, or like, for an afternoon, or whatever it is. But like, to have something up for months or, you know, a long period of time, and there's no real recourse because we don't have it, we don't actually have the rules spelled out in the ordinance or in our, what is this?
Code.
Code, in the code. Thank you. It just, it, it opens up, it, I mean, again, I get where you're coming from as far as, like, I don't know that it's necessarily that punitive, but it is, there are limitations here. But to Heather's point, that it's not, we're not, like, going out and looking for this stuff. It's just as if it, like, comes up as an issue, we have to have recourse, and that's what this allows us to do, from my perspective.
Yeah, I kind of appreciate that. I, you know, it takes one person to abuse it, right? Did I miss in there, is there language around duration? So if I wanted to put up a it's a boy sign and have it span across the front of my house, can I, can I?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I guess it would depend on how big of a it's a boy sign you want to put up and where you want to put it up. I think from the enforcement capacity, from, from where we as, you know, where we put on the city code hat, we don't want an it's a boy sign that's 50 feet by 10 feet in front of your house, dilapidated, blowing into your neighbor's yard. And while that hypothetical's silly, until they're standing on something, we have nothing to stand on. Similar to the business, whichever it may be, and I'm, I'm not going to call anybody out, but banners are the first to, you know, they're, they're the most temporary, the first to become dilapidated, the first to be an eyesore. If it's something council wants to explore, provisions of temporary, whether, you know, by way of district, residential business, otherwise, we'd be happy to bolster that up. But again, this, this really gives us standing for those design concerns, you know, from a design standard concern. If on Saturday afternoon, you want to put up a banner that celebrates something, enforcement gets, gets that call at eight o'clock on Monday, and I'm guessing you're going to have it down, put it that way. If it's a health and human safety thing, it would be addressed, you know, on those legs. But just as a sign itself, that's, that's when we would look into it. The, again, with, with nothing, there's nothing to stand on. And, you know, we're, we're certainly happy to take notes on this if there's ways to address it up. But again, maybe for us to give a bit more precedent, for us to go back and give you some code enforcement issues at an upcoming board session, we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not, not saying no. I'm just, it just feels like it just needs a little more freedom in there. And maybe it's, maybe it's a week, you know, a week for a resident, or five days for a resident, or a day, or whatever it is, and a month for a business. If I want to do a month-long, you know, whiz bang extravaganza, you know, and advertise that, I, I think we ought to let our businesses do that. So that's my thought. I'm sorry, and I maybe I missed it.
No, no, no. I think there is a timeframe for businesses.
Okay. Forgiveness?
Yes. If I may, Mr. Mayor and Council Greenberg, there is a provision for banners in commercial areas where they can request of the city council a special permit. It comes before you if they want something longer than 30 days, or longer than 10 days, excuse me. The way we've drafted this, it used to be for even the 10 days, it would, they would have to come before city council for that request. What we're trying to do is be more responsive, and we now plugged in the name of the city manager for the 10-day banners. And again, that's a special use permit. So, so that, you know, example of a, you know, buffet or something, we just need enough time, I would say administratively, to process that. And then they can post that banner for 10 days. We're going to look at things like, you know, is it in the right of way? Was it fastened correctly? That type of thing. But otherwise, administratively, between Tim and, and planning staff, we're pretty comfortable that we can authorize that. The 10-day and then the 30-day, as I mentioned, will come before council. So they have to apply in advance. They can't just put up the sign and, and then, you know, ask for forgiveness later. We would like a heads-up just so that we can check on the zoning and that type of thing, or how it's fastened.
That's what I'm embarrassed I missed that. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yep. And I think, you know, again, those banners, if I may follow up, in residential, actually, our code, even without these changes, it does say, within residential neighborhoods, no banners are allowed. But we're adding additional clarifying language tonight in the banner section. We were thinking that there was some confusion last fall because it was in two different sections of the same chapter, and... sections of the same chapter and perhaps that's why we're just trying to be overly clear that at least we were hearing, you know, that, that, that city council did not, um, want that opportunity for, um, a fifty-foot banner in a residential property.
Yeah, so thank you for adding that last point, that's kind of what I wanted to bring up, the way I'm viewing this, um, separate from whether or not we think that banners should be in certain places. I think what's before us tonight and why I would advocate for us to proceed with it is that last fall, the council had to adjudicate this, which I don't think is our role and shouldn't be our role. The planning commission differed in their interpretation on code and the city council differed in their interpretation of code and we had to, um, ultimately, city council has the authority to, um, to, um, enforce it as they, as we saw fit, so, um, but that was an interesting situation where we had a, a, a planning commission differing, um, in their, uh, recommendation and what we ultimately did, um, or their interpretation even. And so I think that was the, the reason why this work was, um, done, but probably already know all that, but I just wanted to add that context for people listening too. Um, so I think regardless of whether or not we, we want banners in certain places, I think this just does a good job of clarifying existing language versus adding a whole bunch of new stuff. Um, and I, you know, and if, um, members of the council, uh, want to revisit like residential, um, banners, then I think we can do that. It's just, in my mind, it's a separate discussion because this is just more of an addition or slight, slight cha- it's not really an addition, it's a slight change to clarify things, so we don't have to be in a situation where we're adjudicating.
Councilmember Greenberg, she says? No. I would just, I would, I would like to discuss this just a little bit more, um, in a work session for the resident portion. So, uh, just so everybody knows where my head's at, I agree. I think there needs to be some type of rule. I've, um, like, I've, I've been moved to, uh, consider that because now I'm imagining my neighbor across the street and just this faded-out sign that's tethered like a pirate flag flapping, right? So, nobody wants that. But I also don't want to see my neighbor down the street put a sign out celebrating their kid coming home from boot camp, right? And have somebody call in and be like, "That sign's out of compliance," you know, and it's like, you know, it's just, I feel like there should be a timeframe, like, let it go, take it down.
I mean, I, I don't disagree, I think like a day or like, and, you know, we're going to have a banner up for an afternoon or whatever, like, I don't, I don't really have a problem with that. And I don't think like the intent of this, it's like if somebody did call in on that and it was like, I mean, it's just, it's like you're going to use it for a day and it's going to be down and, you know what I mean? It's like if it's up for two weeks, it's probably up for too long anyway and then, then people are calling because, and then we've got recourse. So I, me personally, I support this and the fact that it's like a clarification in a way that's reasonable. It adds some things that we, I mean, as long as we were going into this, add some stuff around real estate signs, which we definitely have and want to have and, um, you know, technically we're banning them before, so that's good that it's updated. I mean, just the updates are good, I think it makes sense. I think it's maybe worth having a conversation around, you know, do we want to change for residential use, like a, have a, I don't know if we need to like actually have a special use permit or any, but like, you know, maybe there's a conversation with the city manager similar to, to businesses or whatever it is to just say like, "We're going to do this for a day." And it's, or maybe the way that this is written, it's fine, if we let this go and if it becomes a problem, like all these people are calling in and it's like, then, then we address it, maybe.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm processing out loud here, so...
It's all good.
I can see that, I mean, right now, it's just not a problem really either way, so if we do pass it as is and it becomes a problem, if you're like, "Well, you know, I want to celebrate," and then I suppose we can consider it then.
Yeah.
So we're not closing the books forever, so.
There, I think there'll still be a public hearing too.
What's that?
I think there'll still be a public hearing for this as well.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm sorry, I'm, sorry to take us twenty minutes down a rabbit hole. Yes?
Uh, one thing I'll add to and, um, also to what, uh, Councilmember Wagner talked about, I think the, the reason why this is in front of us is an opportunity to iterate on... You're saying, yes, if it becomes an issue or if something else comes up, it would give us the opportunity to make another change to the code. So as it is right now, thank you, Heather, I, I'm happy to support this. Um, I think until, uh, hearing feedback from the community, I would hold off on, um, making further changes or a discussion in a work session. That's, uh, my perspective.
I'll take your guidance on that, okay. So was that a motion?
I will be happy to make a motion. I will move that we, uh, hold the first reading of the ordinance that would adopt changes to city code in chapter five, planning and use, section four-ten, signs and lay approval of the ordinance over, uh, until a second reading and publication of such to be held later this month.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no or nay? That carries, thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you for the conversation.
Okay, on to other business, voucher requests pending approval for dispersment.
I'll make a motion to approve dispersment requests for the period ending, uh, May sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no or nay? That carries, okay. Administrative reports.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, I think last week I said, or last time I said I wouldn't have any more garbage updates, but just a few to touch on. Um, if you still have like a waste management bin or a curbside bin, certainly please contact and, please continue to contact the city so we can contact those companies and get them taken care of and removed for you. And then if you've been patiently waiting till October twenty, October, April twenty-fifth to have, uh, garbage cart size change, um, that is now open and available to be done. So contact utility billing if you would like to change the size of your trash can and you've been waiting to do that. That is the only thing I have for tonight.
Nice work, Jase.
Thank you.
Uh, council general communications. Tim, I'm sorry, Tim, geez, you're right there.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel, hiding in plain sight here. I'll be real quick, since it's been a couple of weeks since we've met, uh, do want to offer some things. Couple of weekends ago, uh, big day in Birdtown, we had stuff going on, on that gorgeous Saturday, um, the Arbor Day event, we had, um, the Lions were up at Grazer doing some weeding and some planting, the Lions hosted another event, uh, there was the barbecue of the public safety, um, so it's kind of that kickoff of the season, it's fun to see people out and about, say hi to your neighbor, uh, I know that was really embraced, so, um, certainly enjoy this time of year. With that, you know, please just check in on, uh, city materials, uh, as we get into spring and summer, uh, everything from the small movie in the park, uh, Monday events to the, uh, whiz-bang days, uh, certainly the crown jewel, uh, how you can get involved, how you can participate, lots of info out there, uh, encourage folks to do so.
All right, excellent, thank you, Tim. Uh, council general updates, communications, sorry, coun- ju- council general communications, let's call it what it is. Uh, Raymond Blackledge, we'll start with you.
Yeah, um, I just want to say thanks to the city, uh, continuously for being mindful. Uh, I think, I've been mulling over this for, uh, a number of days now, this incidents and things that have taken place in Robinsdale and this response, um, that we've had in our community, um, from a number of things. And I just want to say to our residents, uh, or to our neighbors, uh, continue to just be mindful about how we're treating people and acknowledge that, you know, with the summertime also comes struggles that, um, also are highlighted as well too, and how we continue to band together and still create spaces, opportunity for us to gather and, um, be neighborly, so, thank you.
Yeah, um, in light of that, yeah, thank you, Raymond. Um, you know, I mean, I'd be, uh, it just was that, it's so far, I mean, it's only Tuesday, but it feels like it's been a heavy week, uh, and I will say, I just want to make sure, um, this incident happened in, in my ward, in Ward Two, and so I just want to make sure that residents know that I'm available. Uh, I know that the mayor sent out a message and appreciate that, but that, um, I, I'm more than happy to, to talk with residents, I don't, I won't have a lot of answers, but I am going to try and be out in the community this weekend and just be, uh, around Drew and Chowin and, and meet with residents if they want to meet and just be available to listen and hear what they have to say and, um, see how everyone is doing, because I know it's, this is a major thing, so, um, and, and, you know, sad and scary in a lot of different ways, so, uh, don't have a lot of answers, I can, I, I can be upfront about that, but, uh, definitely want to be there for our community. Uh, and with that in mind, just with, you know, it's been several weeks since we've had a, uh, a city council meeting, just with the way that April played out, um, but just a lot of things happening in the news and in national events and the way the national government is working right now and just from a city perspective, want to make sure that your voices are heard, that you can have an impact, that it isn't just shouting into the void. So, um, engage your community, uh, your city council's here, the city staff is here for you, we're here to support our neighbors and one another, um, and just know that you are empowered in this community, um, you know, regardless of any of your background or anything like that, so, um, I know there's a lot of terrible things that are happening at a national level, but that doesn't mean that it has to impact our, uh, our local level, so, just want to put that out there as well.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Thank you. I wanted to take a moment to talk about mental health and how May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And in light of, uh, some of the things that you both have shared, I think it is important to, um, remind each other to check in on your own, uh, mental health, check in on your loved ones. And, uh, as we heard from our commissioner, uh, this evening, there are a lot of great resources in our county and beyond, uh, for crisis resources, mental health resources and otherwise. Um, and mental health is very important, so, uh, I encourage you to, uh, reflect on your well-being and your loved ones' well-being and seek out resources that are available to you. That's all for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that, Councilmember Greenberg, I, uh, second that wholeheartedly. Um, I want to thank the mayor for your statement that you put out about the, um, the unfortunate, um, shooting at Sanford Park, um, and my heart goes out to the community members, uh, affected by that. Um, Tim, I have a, a little bit of a laundry list for you, if that's okay. Um, so, kind of just going back through the meeting, I would love at a, a work session an update on, uh, on park signage, I think we touched on it a little bit, but maybe just a clarification from Matt or somebody on what exactly we put on, on signs, um, and if we can get any information about the sign at Hubbard Station as well. I know that's, um, not necessarily our, um, purview, but if we can find that out, that would be great. Um, I would also be curious to know for our business districts, if we do have any accessibility requirements for any of that stuff, so that resident mentioned, um, walk-up, kind of, I, I think I was, um, heard like things that are, um, like the ATM example, I guess, was the one that stood out to me about, you know, if you do provide a certain service, is there, um, a kind of a, any kind of requirement? I think you get what I'm asking. All right, and then, I would love a city update and city viewpoint on the HERC stuff. So we heard from Commissioner Lundey, I think I got a little bit of what I wanted, but at the same time, I think there's, could be more specifics on the timeline we've heard for its closure because it seems to change. So I would love just for, and especially since we kind of got a new waste taller, I think it goes into that conversation too. And then I just wanted to make a general comment about the, I think I mentioned this last time or the meeting before, that the audio feedback, I think it was a lot better this time, there wasn't as many issues, I think, with the, um, AV today, so I just appreciate if there was work done, um, just for doing that, so, and, I don't know, yeah, that's it, thanks.
Can I say one more thing before you go? Maybe. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I did want to remind residents that there is a walk with the mayor on Thursday night this week, starts at, uh, six-thirty PM and it's, uh, at Grazer Park, it starts, I think it's like a mile and a quarter walk, and we're going to walk with the mayor, or at least I'm going to.
Nice. See if I can keep up. Thank you, uh, uh, for the entire council, for your comments and reminders, uh, thank you, Aaron specifically, uh, really appreciate the note-taking and delivering that, that was really excellent. Um, so, you know, a lot of, a lot of heavy news, uh, lately and at the same time, it has been some of the most gorgeous days of the year. Um, I love this month, I love how green it gets. Um, you know, listen, with all the tough stuff that's happening out there, I just, I think it's important that we all remember, you know, we start the comment, we say things online, it's just, you know, there's, there's a lot of sides to these stories and we just need to take a minute and consider that maybe we don't know everything before we voice our opinions. Not that your opinions don't matter, but just seek to understand before you're understood sometimes, you know? And if you see something that concerns you, definitely say something, you know, so, um, with that, uh, happy beginning of May, everybody, and see you next week, meeting, oh, just so badly, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will move that we adjourn the meeting.
I second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no or nay? Meeting adjourned.